Good evening, welcome to the August 1st, 2019, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair of both sides, just a few things before we get started, everybody. The first thing is, if you can do us all a favor, and I want to make sure we do the same thing too, to turn off or silence your cellphones because they interfere with our recording equipment. In addition, if you are inclined to speak to one another in the audience, if you can go out in the hallway to speak instead of speaking in the auditorium, we would greatly appreciate that because that also interferes with our recording equipment. And lastly, I just want to read our emergency exit procedures. Okay. "In case of emergency evacuation, please exit through the rear doors of this room to one of the staircases across the hall and continue downstairs and out through the main entrance. Please do not attempt to use the elevators during an emergency evacuation. In case of a medical emergency, the automated external defibrillator and first aid kit are both located in the hallway on this floor opposite the elevator. Restrooms are located across the hall." And with that, we will get started with the agenda.
Okay. There is some changes to the agenda. First thing is Item 5 on the agenda, which is Will Square LLC. I'm going to move that we re-advertise this case for September 5.
Okay, we don't have to vote on it because it's a re-ad.
All right. All right. Item 10 on the agenda, which is 106 Colt Spring Point LLC, has been withdrawn. Item 12, which is KTB Flying Point Revocable Trust, I'll move that we adjourn that to 9/5.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Recuse myself on that application.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair of both sides.
Okay. Item 14 on the agenda, which is Kevin Mans and Janet Roostmans, I'll move that we adjourn that to September 19.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair of both sides.
In the decision calendar, James Broderick and Tara Terza.
So, I'm requesting that this be put over. We were waiting on written submissions. It's my understanding that they came in today. But I just wanted to clarify that everyone had seen the letter and email from the neighbor, which was part of the written submission, and just make sure, if not, review that prior to the next meeting.
Okay.
Or if anyone had any questions on it, reach out to Katie on that.
Okay. I'm going to put this decision over to 8:15.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. 27 Dune LLC, move that we put that decision over to 9/19.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And then Maria Michael Rothstein, I'll move that we put that over to 8/15/19.
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Aye. Opposed?
And then let's discuss the Patricia A. Ben Cardino Trust. I believe the town attorney has indicated to me that we're going to...
I think there was a letter, a request to reopen this, the attorney for the applicant, for further testimony. I'm sure there was, I just can't remember the date of it.
Okay. Okay, so I'll put a motion on...
I was just trying to give us a date so you more can choose whatever date.
Well, let the chairman do that, but I'll make a motion to reopen the Ben Cardino Trust.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair of both sides, reopened.
Okay, and then we'll put it on the Agenda 4.
I don't know. We have room in the Agenda 8:15. We could do that.
Okay. All right, is that a motion, Mr. Grossman?
That would be in the form of a motion.
And I'll second that, okay?
Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair of both sides.
Okay, back to the beginning of the agenda, folks. Item 1 on the agenda is the Julie Lynn Levine Revocable Trust, 46A Old Country Road in West Hampton. Applicant seeks relief from Town Code 330-115C for a principal front yard, God bless you, setback of 32.51 feet where 39.7 feet is existing, and relief from Town Code 330-11 Residential District Stable of Dimensional Regulations for a principal minimum sideyard setback of 17.07 feet where 20 feet is required, all for a proposed one-story addition to an existing dwelling and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction? Do you have a lead on this?
Does anyone want to take it?
I think...
Take it from Mr. Kelly.
Okay. You're going to take it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so Brian's taken. Okay. Good evening.
Who's got the package? You got the package?
Okay. So I just have to swear you both in unless either of you is an attorney.
Okay.
Not attorneys, okay. If you can just both state your names and addresses, please.
I'm Dean Johnson at 46 Old Country Road in West Hampton, New York.
Okay. And ma'am?
Julie Levine, 46 Old Country Road, West Hampton, New York.
And do you both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth or nothing about the truth?
Yes. I do.
Okay. If you can tell us about your application.
Okay. We are looking for a small variance to add on a living room area, closet area, and another bathroom. We have a very old house that was built in the 1880s, we're in the farm kind of area of West Hampton, and so the house has only one bathroom in the whole house. It has basically no closets, and so we... And we have a living room that just maybe fits three people, so we want to add on a proper family room.
Okay. All right. Have you heard from any of your neighbors about the application?
No.
Well, we sent everything to the neighbors. I heard from two of them.
Okay.
And they said, oh, good.
Okay.
Okay.
Have you heard from any of our neighbors?
Well, I guess we'll find out momentarily if anyone's here in the audience. I'm not sure if we got anything in writing. We did just get our written submissions in. But in any case, wanted to ask about, there is a shed on the property that doesn't have a CO, so we had a note from the building department to... That the shed without the CO needs to either be removed or moved to a conforming location?
It's going to be removed.
Okay.
So if we grant a variance conditioned upon that being removed, you're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. The other thing sometimes we do on surveys is if we know it's going to be removed, sometimes we have it referenced on the survey to be removed. I'm just taking a look to see if there's anything referenced, which I don't think...
There's nothing on the survey.
There isn't. There isn't. Okay. All right. I mean, we don't have to do that, but we could do that.
See if anybody's here.
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, the thing about this from, you know, from my perspective, in terms of the setback relief that's being requested...
Minor.
It's minor. It's minor. The impact on the neighbor would be... I would have to really be convinced of it having a negative impact on one of the neighbors because it's modest relief that you're requesting. The fact that you have a small house and you're just looking to make it bigger is understandable. Okay.
Anybody in the audience?
Yes. Any other questions, or members of the board?
No.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the Julie Lynn Levine Revocable Trust? This is for 46A Old Country Road in West Hampton.
Okay, Brian.
Brian, it's all yours.
Okay. Are we going to have them revise the survey, or we're good with the condition of the shed removed?
Okay, well, we need to have it indicated on the survey that shed to be removed.
Look to the board.
I'm fine with just conditioning.
Yeah, we'll just condition it. How's that? All right?
Oh, thank you. We've got to say they are checking forever.
Yeah. And say the course to you too. Okay? Go ahead, Brian.
Move that we close the public record for all purposes with a decision. Try to have it done for 8:15. If not, it would be 9/5.
Thank you.
Okay. But we'll have it for tonight.
Yeah, we'll try it for 8:15.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair of both sides, thank you for being here. You don't have to be here at our next meeting. You can just call Candace the next day, and she'll also know if it's getting adjourned, if it's going to be on for the 15th, so maybe give her a call that day as well.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
No problem. All right. Have a good night.
Item 2 on the agenda is Juliana Albrassin. Mr. Springer, make me get that together. 192 Brookhaven Avenue in Flanders, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-145-119. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code to legalize the construction of an accessory apartment within the main dwelling on a non-conforming lot. 330-11.2F, accessory apartment special standards, to allow an accessory apartment to be located on a lot that has a lot area of less than 20,000 square feet. Two, 330-11... Excuse me, .2F, for a lot area of 15,000 square feet where 32,000 square feet is required, 70% of the 40,000 square feet. And three, to allow the accessory apartment to be 73% of the total floor area, the principal dwelling, and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction? I think Brian.
Good evening. State your name and address, please.
Kevin Springer, 61 Channing Cross, Hampton Bay, New York, 11946.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. So you can tell us about the application.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what's glaring, obviously, is the 73%. But as... If you had a chance to look at the floor plan, the house was actually built predominantly this way except for, you know, this second floor was obviously living space at the time, and all they did was just break it off into two.
And add a kitchen.
Yeah. Which this... That kitchen area was actually a rec area at the time. All they did was add the stove and the appliances. We tried to make the main level a little bit bigger by taking some of the garage away, but as you can see, it doesn't do much. It's not a huge house. The one... The few things that are notable, though, is that in the affordable housing districts, this is quite comparable with what's going on over in Flanders, which is very... Becoming very populated in that area. It fits their plan as a two-to-three-bedroom moderately priced. Property's a little under, not glaring, but it is under, obviously. We've tried to come up with some other areas, but there's really... Fingers are tied, you know, fingers are crossed and just hands are tied that there's really not a lot to do in regards to making it either the living space on the main level bigger, or the living space habitable upstairs any smaller. There's no add-ons, and that's, you know, unless you have any questions, I don't...
Well, how did it become an accessory apartment without permits?
They... When they bought it, it was half-done, and they just thought it was okay, so they finished it. And they had some supposedly family members move upstairs.
When did this happen?
This happened a little... Well, let's see, the violation was probably early this year, and they've been there... The tenants have been there for probably about nine to 10 months now.
Are your clients here tonight?
They are not.
Okay. So typically, when we have as-built, we want to hear from either the applicant or whoever did the work, who was responsible for whatever went up without permits. So I, speaking for myself, would want to hear from the applicants under the circumstances. I'm not sure where my colleagues are.
I agree with that. And my other question is, you have a three-bedroom accessory apartment that's not permitted.
Correct.
Three-bedroom is not?
Nope. It does not allow three bedrooms.
Well... All right, so we can...
Looks like there's some work to do.
We can bring them in, we can discuss it.
Yeah, we can do that. That's okay.
But you can also discuss it prior...
Yeah, privately. We can approve a three-bedroom. Right. Understood.
They're not allowed.
No, that's only as a rental.
And the percentage is way too high.
Well, even if you make it a two-bedroom, the living space, habitable living space is not going to change. That number will stay the same.
Right.
So whether we do, you know, obviously can't do the three-bedroom, but even as a two-bedroom, our percentage is not going to change.
Well, you can make it smaller.
Well, the way the house is laid out is really... I mean, you can't have... You have one way going upstairs to what they call the accessory apartment, but there's no way to break that off and to keep it as part of downstairs for them, or vice versa. You know what I'm saying? It's just...
But that doesn't mean it's acceptable.
What's that?
That doesn't mean it's acceptable.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying that if we could kind of switch it around a little bit, but it's... You would technically have to probably put in another entranceway.
Do whatever you have to do.
Well, I don't know, Helen, if there are four board members that feel the same way, so...
That's how I feel.
I understand. So I feel free to share it with the applicants because maybe we can discuss that issue with them as well.
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay, I will bring one of them, and they do not speak the best of English, but we will...
Hire an interpreter and bring them in.
We can do that. And we'll go from there.
Okay. So my other question is, when do you think you'd like to come back?
They're looking to put this behind them. They are scared to death of the...
January 5th, worry?
No, they don't like this thought of the violation hanging over their head. So whatever is convenient and quickly would be...
Well, we don't like them biliting neither.
And I also have to check if anybody's here before we pick a date. So any other questions, or members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Albrassin? This is for 192 Brookhaven Avenue in Flanders. Okay. So we have room on the agenda for August 15th, in two weeks.
That's fine. Yes. And just for the record, I have spoken to three of the... Three of the neighbors. 253 Oak, which is the property right behind them. They had no problem other than the fact that they had a party once and it went a little too loud. 286 Brookhaven had no issues, and then 195 Brookhaven, which is across the street, also did not have any issues.
Okay. Very good. And also, can you relate it to your clients as well, if you wouldn't mind, that, you know, this is how we treat most as-built applications?
No, I know that.
So, you know, we just want to know what happened and how it happened, as whatever information they've got for us, we want them to tell us. That's it.
Get rid of a bedroom, Kevin.
Yes.
And we have to get rid of a bedroom.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Is that a motion? Adam?
Actually, Brian's the lead, so he probably should be making the motion.
Whoever. Motion to adjourn for all purposes to 8/15.
Second.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair of both sides.
I don't know whether you want to talk to the speaker or the listener, Cornelius, or right now, Mr. Daly is on here.
I could. I could. Anyway...
Just bringing it like a...
No, I understand. Just want to mention as well to everybody that we have one board member, Cornelius Kelly, who's not going to be here tonight, and Mike Daly is going to be here, but he's running a little bit late. So just so you know, we do have at least one person who won't be here out of our regular full board. Something else?
I have just one thing. I have a lot of things I'm saying at me.
Okay.
I don't need to hear... Hopefully, the board can speak enough for me.
Okay. That's fine. Okay.
If anybody else speaks up.
Okay. All right.
Item 2 on the agenda is DAS Properties LLC, 8 Oak Road in Neuyak, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-5-5-65. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for a proposed two-story dwelling with attached deck on a non-conforming lot. 330-115D2, continuance for a proposed rear yard setback of 22.9 feet where 23.08 feet is permitted. 330-84D, pyramid height for a proposed encroachment in the amount of 864 cubic feet, 432 cubic feet on the north and south side respectively. And three, 330-105A, schedules of minimum and maximum floor area to allow the area of the first floor to be 740 square feet where 800 square feet is required, and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction? Can you just wait one second? I want to pass down some submissions.
Sure.
Here's the original for this. If you want to pass this down.
This is Brian. You're a very busy guy tonight, Brian, you know?
Yep.
When in doubt, just pass it to Brian.
Thank you. I don't want to put too much work on you, Keith.
Thank you.
Get your Herb shirt on tonight.
Appreciate it. On behalf of Mr. Phillips, take it easy.
I'll pass it. Take one of these and test. Thank you.
This is the original file. I think. Whoops.
Everybody good?
I think so. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, board members. Wayne Bruin, O'Shea, Marc Cincic, and Bruin for the applicant, DAS Properties LLC. The property's known as 8 Oak Lane... Oak Road, actually, in the Hamlet in Neuyak. It's also shown as Lot 22 on part of Block L, Section M of the map of Pine Neck subdivision. Parcel size is 4,215 square feet, just under 1/10 of an acre. The zoning is R10, and the subject property was part of a decision. This board made two decisions on January 19th, 2017, finding that the subject lot and the adjoining lot to the north were held in single and separate ownership and eligible for a building permit in accordance with the provisions of 330-115D. Copies of those decisions were submitted with the application. The parcel in question is approximately 54.8 feet by 77.5 feet in depth. The R10 zoning and the 3/10, 4/10 law, which is cited in your decision, 330-115D, has a minimum, despite the relief that you're eligible for, you can't go less than 30 feet for your front yard, nor 30 feet for your rear yard, nor 10 feet for your side yards. So the dilemma we have in this property, even under 330-115, is you can't get a building envelope that meets the requirements of both the Town Code and the State Building Code to get a minimum width of 20 feet, which is necessary for a building. So what you have is with a 30-foot depth front yard and a 30-foot rear yard, and I provided you a copy of the survey marked up, a reduced copy, that shows you what the allowable building envelope is. And the allowable building envelope, although it has the width, has only a depth of 17 and 1/2 feet. So we're here tonight, in the first instance, seeking to construct a modest 1,266 square And the required setback, we're asking for a relief 7.1 feet on the rear yard to allow that house to have a rear yard setback of 22.9 feet. The required front yard would remain as 30 feet, which is what the code requires, and we didn't look to reduce the front yard at all, which is, frankly, if you go through the neighborhood, most of the houses are all reduced front yard and rear yard. Here, the health department's requiring new septics to be in the front yard, and this property, the septic that's going to be installed is a new IA system, and therefore, they need the space in the front yard, so we maintained a 30-foot front yard, and the only relief we're asking for is to the rear yard. If you look at the house we're proposing, we ran into another dilemma. And there's a section of the code which is interesting, and the building department has read it in a couple different ways, so we're asking you to look at this section of the code, which is 330-105, which is the minimum and maximum floor areas. Here, the dilemma we have is the code indicates, and if you look at this statute, the way it's written, it says the minimum floor area for a dwelling in the R10 zone that we're in, says one-story building or first floor, and the minimum is 800 square feet. Again, if we try to achieve the 800 square foot first floor, you can't fit it within the building envelope. That building envelope we show you is not... It's less than 800 square feet. So what we've done here is a 740 square foot building footprint. However, we added a 400, 500 square foot second floor, where you have the combined two-floor total, the minimum under the code is 1,200. So we meet the combined total, but again, the way the code is written, we're not sure if we need a variance for the first floor because it says one-story or first floor. It says or first floor. So I think part of the reading is we need to have a first floor at least 800 square feet, and if you go with the second floor, we've got to have at least 1,200 square feet. The building department occasionally has said, for example, 600 meets the 1,200, and that's fine. I've seen that approved in other cases without getting relief, but just in case we need the relief, we ask for that relief. The other component of relief we've asked, if you look at the house, the architect attempted to get the floor area on the second floor, he did dormers. I mean, it's the shape of the house, and you saw the floor plan and the envelope and the pyramid drawings. He did dormers on all four sides, and there's a small portion of the dormers on both the side yards that extends into the pyramid, and it ends up being approximately 864 cubic feet, which, in my opinion, is pretty modest. We provided tonight copies of GIS information that pretty much comes from every lot in this particular street and neighborhood, and if you look at that and you go further, the more you expand into the Pine Neck, you'll see that practically every property in this Pine Neck subdivision is either had relief from this board of similar form, or they've had pre-existing structures, all with setbacks much less or equal to what we're proposing here. The... Again, we would say it's not substantial, the side... You know, the rear yard setback is less than 23%. The reduction in the floor area is less than 7 and 1/2%. And the sky plane encroachment of 864 is pretty modest, given the size and shape of the house that we're proposing. So that's the relief we're asking for. I believe our petition supports everything, and we've provided you with further information to support the request. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to explain.
Have you heard from any of the neighbors?
We got a call, but I wasn't sure what their comments were. I think it was more informational. I didn't talk to the neighbor. I think it was then our neighbor, I can't recall either, to the immediate east. And just if you look at the character of the area and the aerial photograph, our neighbor to the east has a... An elongated lot, has a house that's virtually on the adjoining street, Neuyak Avenue, but immediately to the east of our property, there is no structures or otherwise. It's sort of the vacant portion of their lot. The property to the... Immediately to our south, the property to our north, if you recall, was part of the decision this board made, finding it single and separate. Our client actually bought that and his sister-in-law is now the owner and occupies that premise. They have no objections. So we have heard from one neighbor. As far as the property to the south, if you look at it, the house that is there, and we provided the survey, that's a two-story house with a front yard of 15 feet, side yards of 12 feet and 10 feet, and a rear yard of 22 feet. So that's a much larger house, much larger footprint than what we're even asking for. So...
That answers your question.
Okay, any other questions, members of the board? Any other questions? I mean, I think it's relatively modest relief, but let's see if anybody's here. So is anyone here this evening who would like to be heard in connection with the application of DAS Properties LLC? This is for Eight Oak Road in Pine Neck/Noyac. Okay. If not, Brian, it's yours.
Seeing and hearing no one, I'll move that we close the public hearing. Put out the determination on 8:15.
Second.
Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item four on your agenda is Cecil Holding LLC, Four Fedec Lane in East Quogue, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-341-266.1. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code. One, to legalize a wood deck, 330-11, residential district stable of dimensional regulations for an accessory side yard setback of 9.2 feet where 20 feet is required. And two, 330-76D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts. And 330-83C, yards to allow the deck to remain within the required minimum and total side yard for the principal building. And two, to legalize the location of the hot tub, 330-11, residential district stable of dimensional regulations for an accessory side yard setback of 13.5 feet where 20 feet is required. And two, 330-76D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts. And 330-83C, yards to allow the hot tub to remain within the required minimum total side yard for the principal building and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction?
Good evening.
Good evening. For the applicant, Brian Stolar, attorney representing Cecil Holding LLC, I have present with me tonight David Zaluf, who is essentially the owner of the property.
And I can swear your client in whenever you'd like.
Okay, well, I don't know, his testimony will probably be just in response to any questions that you may have.
Okay.
Would you like to swear him in now?
Sure.
Just in case.
If you can state your name and address, please.
David Zaluf, 10 Bond Street, Pine Neck, New York, 1102.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Briefly, as was stated, what we're looking to do is maintain portions of a deck that encroach into the side yard setback and a hot tub, which is 13.5 feet from.
Keith, I handed you with the affidavits.
Sorry.
I did.
Sorry, thank you very much.
Didn't want to distract you.
Yeah, right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so as I was saying, we're proposing to maintain portions of the deck that encroach into the side yard setback area, most of our deck does not, and the hot tub which encroaches into our side yard setback area at a distance of 13.5 feet from the side yard property line. The benefit to the applicant here is significant, there really is no detriment, and the document I passed out to everybody, and the items on there I'll go through and explain and demonstrate to you quickly why it is that this has absolutely no impact on the neighborhood and on the neighbors. First, before we even get to there, this property sits in a cul-de-sac where there are three homes, four, six, and eight. Fedec Lane, the applicant's property being four, sits at the end of that cul-de-sac. There are only driveways and vacant space essentially where this is located. All of the buildings on the property, the adjoining properties are significantly distant from where we are proposing this. There's no living area, and there's no recreational area anywhere near the deck. And then I point out, and part of what I submitted in 1982, the board approved a deck in this location that, as I'll go through and discuss, you'll see it's kind of an amorphous deck that really is disconnected, doesn't have much use. By configuring it the way we're configuring it now, it has more use, and in fact, by configuring it the way we configured it now, it has 24 square feet less area in the encroaching area than the previous deck had. So I'll walk you through what I have, what you're all starting to look at. Exhibit A, you'll see, is just the survey that's really there so that you can see where the compass point is, and when I refer to north, south, east, west, you'll know exactly what I'm referring to. Document B is the variance that was granted by this board, first page being your decision, second page showing where that deck was located before. You'll see there were three portions of that deck connected to the house, coming out off of a sliding glass door, leading out to the first one, but up against the house, the second one just next to that, and then a ramp that led to this third area that was considered a deck. The third document that's in here is Exhibit C, which I have highlighted with colors. What you see there is everything, what is in yellow and blue is what exists now, what was not approved before. The red and the yellow is what was approved before. So what we're adding is just the blue area. And you'll see by Exhibit D, I put in blue and pink. Pink is the area that we've removed, blue is the area that we have added, and that's essentially it. We have the one small triangular area that is just within the 20-foot setback. We have the ramp that takes up most of our additional area, most of our revised deck. Our revised deck has new space, if you want to call it that, although the net is less, the new space is about 44 square feet. 38 square feet of that is the ramp, and the remaining six is the two triangular areas in blue that you see in Exhibit D. Now, rather than just looking at two-dimensional, in Exhibit E, you can essentially see where that ramp is, and just beyond that, the portion of the deck that encroaches into the side yard setback, which is obviously to the right in this photo. Exhibit F similarly shows the ramp, and also shows beyond the ramp, the property line, and what you can see through that property, you'll see this significant foliage, so this is blocked not only by nature, but also by the configuration of the other properties and the fact that as you start to look at the following photos. Exhibit G, taken from the edge of the ramp, looking towards the side property line, you'll see you cannot see anything, you can see very little through the fence, through the trees, and what you do see is open space. Similarly, Exhibit H shows a view from standing on the deck, looking over the top of the wall that is on the deck. Again, you'll see there's just foliage and open space next door. Then we walked out to the cul-de-sac, and you stand out by the cul-de-sac, essentially in line with the property line, looking to the left is Six Fedec Lane, and the entrance to Six Fedec Lane, to the right is our property. At Four Fedec Lane, Exhibit J also shows another view as you start to look in towards the driveway leading into the property that is next door to us, to the big tree that you see there, almost in the center, just off-center to the left in that picture, to the right of that is where our deck is. And as you can see, as I point out to the left, you just have this winding lane that is, appears to be a winding lane, which is a driveway leading to the neighboring property. You see that same driveway in Exhibit K. Exhibit L brings you a little further over into the cul-de-sac, and you see that you also have nothing, not only in front of Six, but in front of Eight, because Eight starts over to the left of that entry wall, entry piers that lead into Six. And again, there is nothing there. We're not going to bother anybody, we have not bothered anybody. It's not going to impact a soul. Exhibit N is the survey for the adjoining lots, the Lot Six Fedec, and you'll see, we got it in two copies, two pages. The first page in that survey is leading from Fedec towards the property, and you'll see where the winding roadway is, the winding driveway that leads into the property, they get to their house by passing that tennis court. And only after you get past that tennis court do you then go to the second page, and you'll see where the house is, again, significantly distant from where we're proposing. And Exhibit O is an aerial photograph, again, showing how far everything is from where we have this deck. The bottom of that thermometer, or as I call it, the bottom of the cul-de-sac, our property is at the top of that picture, to the left. You see the roadway that leads in, the narrow entrance to Six, and then you see where Eight Fedec Lane is, which is at least a couple hundred feet from the proposed deck, from the proposed hot tub, proposed to be maintained in locations that are shown, both in the survey and as you can see from the photographs, Exhibit E and Exhibit F showing where that deck and where that ramp is located. Again, the ramp is the majority of what our square footage is that encroaches further into what we had before, based on the approval in 1982. And overall, we have less square footage in our deck area and more usable square footage in our deck area than we did previously. That is our case, unless the board has any additional question or any questions.
Sure. How did the structures that went up that didn't have approvals go up?
So all of this was here, the shape that it was, including the ramp, and we just left it, but for like removing rotted pieces and putting back. I have no idea how the shape came to be, what it is today, other than I'm assuming that the amoebic deck that was approved previously, somebody between 1982 and recently just combined all these decks into one somehow, I don't know.
Did you just buy that house?
Two years ago.
And when you bought it?
That was the shape.
This was the deck that was there.
Yeah. I don't like the ramp, but the ramp was there, so I left it, I didn't want to touch it.
Was there also a hot tub there?
Yes.
Okay, so prior owner, or someone who was hired on, he happened to have a prior owner did it, you don't have any of the, you wouldn't have any information as to how it happened. I'm presuming you had an attorney when you purchased the property, and perhaps the issue didn't come up.
Didn't come up.
Yep, okay.
Does the C of O and CFC for the house and the deck?
Oh, I get it. It can be a little confusing. But there isn't nothing for a hot tub, so I mean, that one, that one.
Correct. Right, that happened sometime after 1982, it wasn't shown in the survey. Not all surveys back there may have included a hot tub, I don't know, I don't want to speculate.
Sure, sure.
But you just don't know.
Have you heard from any of the neighbors?
Six or eight.
Not about this, I got invited to a barbecue.
No, my neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, and the positive about all this is that it's modest relief. The fact that it's screened is important. The only thing I'm thinking of is a condition that you maintain the screening, that you keep the screening up to make sure that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the neighbors aren't impacted. In any case, that was my only thought about it. Any other questions, members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Cecil Holding LLC? This is for Four Fedec Lane in East Quogue. If not, Keith.
I'm sorry, dude. Okay.
I saw something.
With that.
I explained to him today, he said he needed a J letter today, but he still hasn't waited for our response.
Okay. So what I'll do is I'll put it on, I'm going to close it, and put it on for decision for 8:15, as long as we hear from the con board. If we don't, then we're going to have to.
Fully understood.
Put it down in a couple weeks, okay? All right? But in the meantime, I'll set it up for that, and if we get the report, referral report from the con board in time to be able to write this decision, we'll do that, okay?
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. DeSessa. Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, moving on to item six on your agenda, which is Robert S. Stabile Jr., Five Landing Lane in East Quogue, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-343-1-57. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code. One, for a proposed swimming pool. 330-11 residential district stable of dimensional regulations for an accessory distance from street setback front yard, Shinnickock Road, of 20 feet where 50 feet is required. And two, 330-76D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts. And 330-83C, yards to allow the swimming pool to be located in the required front yard for the principal dwelling. And two, to legalize the location of a framed shed. One, 330-11 residential district stable of dimensional regulations, excuse me, for an accessory distance from street setback front yard, Shinnickock Road, of 9.4 feet where 50 feet is required. And two, 330-76D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts. And 330-83C, yards to allow the framed shed to remain within the required front yard for the principal dwelling and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction?
Good evening. Unless you're an attorney, I'd just set this for you, and if you can state your name and address.
Robert Stabile, Five Landing Lane, East Quogue, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. If you can tell us about the application.
I'm applying for an application to install a swimming pool. Wife and kids have been asking for one for years, and basically we've had the shed. There was a shed there prior, when I first purchased the house in 97. I bought a new shed since then, probably about 15 or 18 years ago, and you can't even see the shed from the road. And the whole issue really is that my rear yard is considered a front yard, where that road is the entrance to Shinnickock Shores Association. Is any of you guys familiar with Shinnickock Shores at all? Brought some pictures if you wanted to see. But it's a private road, I don't have access to it. There was always a fence there, I have a lot of shrubs on my side, and there's bushes and shrubs on Shinnickock Shore's side, so you can't even, you can't really, you can't see my shed from the road. I took some pictures too, from both sides, so if you guys wanted to see, I can show you the pictures. All my neighbors are very supportive. One of my neighbors wrote me a letter, next door, Mr. Loggins, who applied. I have his variance, and the variance number one, Landing Lane, that applied for pools. And all my neighbors are very supportive, and they were actually shocked to hear that their rear yard is also considered a front yard. And all my neighbors also, the majority also have small utility sheds as well, with a 10-foot buffer zone, which we thought that was in compliance, didn't realize it was 50 feet.
So you've got limitations on the property. Two front yards makes for some challenges.
Can we have the letter in support?
Sure. You haven't heard from any of the neighbors in a negative way?
No, sir.
And the shed originally went up, when you bought the property, there was a shed there, and then you subsequently replaced it?
Yes, there was an aluminum shed in that position. And I got a shed from like North Fork Wood Design when it was on Route 58, and that was a long time ago.
Yep. Well, one of the things that's a little bit confusing about sheds is that you can have a shed without a permit, if it's of a certain size, and if it's in a conforming location. So some people with sheds may get confused, thinking that wherever, if they buy a property that has a shed on it, that you don't need a building permit, and that may or may not be the case. If there's any doubt, better to ask. I'll just put it that way. But, you know, on the flip side of it, the fact that you burdened by two front yards is significant here. In any case.
I'm impacting anybody?
Yeah, yeah. So we do have a note from the building department about a plastic shed to be removed or moved to a conforming location?
Said I would move that, that's on the north side of my house, or is that correct?
Yep, yep. All right, so we would want that one.
I'll remove that.
Removed or moved to a conforming location.
See, if I can get rid of my rotting lawn mower once I put in a pool, then I'll have more room in my shed for my kids' bicycles.
Oh, good, good.
You'll get rid of that plastic shed.
These things always kind of work out. That's good. All right. Any other questions, members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Stabile Jr.? This is for Five Landing Road in East Quogue. If not, Jasers.
I move to close the public hearing, and I will have a decision on 8:15.
Second.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
You don't have to come here on the 15th, you can just call Candace the next day.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Item seven on your agenda, Edward Brody, 12 Old Quogue Road in Riverside, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-139-3-47.2. Applicant requests relief from Town Code 330-82, lot with, to allow a minimum road frontage of zero feet where 40 feet is required, and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction?
Okay. Adam Grossman, I'm recused from this application.
It's all yours.
We good, Katie?
Yep.
Good evening.
Where are you in first? Unless you're an attorney.
Edward Brody.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Okay, tell us where you're here.
Pardon me?
Tell us why you're here.
I, um.
You can sit up here too, if you want.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I purchased a piece of property from Suffolk County, and it's the piece of property we're talking about tonight, and it was a county auction, and I go to them occasionally. And I, I go to them occasionally. And I noticed that this piece of property was in Flanders area and, uh, and the county said that it had a right-of-way. So obviously, I checked it out and sure enough, it had a right-of-way. So I bid on this property. I bought it. And, um, I had, I, you have the, the survey in front of you?
Yes.
We had a house set on it that fits, meets all, uh, standards and qualifications in the zoning. And, um, evidently, we need a variance for the right-of-way to touch East Quogue Road. So that's why I'm here. I'm asking for a variance to be able to connect my right-of-way into the East Quogue Road. Everything is standard. Everything meets all the code. Uh, I had, uh, checked it out. The variance was granted in 1964. So when I bought the property, I had to have, uh, I had to go back. I had taken a regular, uh, title on, then I had to go back more yet than, than, than 1964 to verify that this here property was usable. And it is. And that's, and, and, uh, but I have to use the right-of-way to get into Quogue Road, and that's why I'm here tonight, to get.
You, you know, the lot does not front the street.
Pardon me?
The lot does not touch any street.
Correct.
You have zero road frontage on the lot.
Correct.
And you only access it through right-of-way.
Correct.
Which you have rights to, but not ownership of.
I have the ownership to that, sir.
You have a right of, you have a right to it, but you don't own the, the title to it.
I don't own the what?
You don't own the under, you don't own the ground that the right-of-way is over. That's your neighbor's property. You just have a right to access it.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just making it clear for the record so the, the public and everyone can understand.
Yeah, I have the right to use it.
Okay.
And, and, and that's why I'm here tonight, sir.
Have you heard from any of your neighbors?
Um, uh, an attorney called me last night. A, a woman by the name of, uh, Elsie, uh, a, a woman.
It looks like someone's here, so we'll, we'll get to them. It looks like somebody's here.
Oh.
So we'll, we'll talk to.
Oh, yeah. Uh, we, we, we did all the posting. We did everything. We've got pictures of that. In fact, the neighbor even helped me post the, uh, the signs there. And, uh, I have pictures of that, if you'd like to see that too.
No, we haven't, Katie. Okay, let me submit.
All right. And, uh, so this, uh, young lady, uh, called me yesterday and she, uh, wanted to know what it was all about today. And I told her, uh, you know, I said, "Everything I got has been submitted to the board and I sent you everything that I had to send you." She says, "Well, do you have this?" I says, "You really have to do your own homework. I don't know what you want." I mean, I did everything the board wanted in, in, in my application. And she says, "Are you an attorney?" I said, "No, no." "Oh, then, oh, you want to be hardball?" I said, "No."
Well, we, we're only here about the application.
Oh.
We'll hear what everyone has to say.
Oh, okay.
Before we ask from everybody, when everybody's here.
Yes, sir.
Um, is there anything else you want to tell us first? You don't have to. We could hear from everybody and then we'll ask you some more questions.
You'll be able to respond.
Yeah.
What would you want to know?
Nothing right now unless you want to tell us something else.
Well, the, the building meets all codes. The building, uh,
You heard that. Yep, okay.
Helen, do you have any questions or?
No, he's, he's, he's told his story.
Okay. Well, yeah, I was gonna have some more, but I figured we'd hear from the public first.
Should I step down?
No, you can stay here.
Okay.
Let's see what the public has to say.
Is there anyone here from the public on the application of 12 Old Quogue Road, Edward Brody? If you are, you can step up to the podium or sit up here.
Are you guys together or?
No.
Okay, okay.
I will take you one at a time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Are you an attorney?
No, I'm not.
Okay, so we're gonna swear, swear you in, please. Uh, your name and address?
My name is Aleka Hines. I'm 1130 Middle Road, Riverhead, New York, 11901.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
I swear.
Very good. And if you could just spell your name for Ms. Cowell.
Yes, um, it's spelled Z.S. and Zebra. No worries. Z.S. and Zebra, U, L.S. and Larry, E.I., K.A. My last name is Hines, H.I., N.E.S.
Okay.
I want to say thank you for the posting because if it wasn't for the posting, we would not have been aware of this matter. Um, we are the owners of one of the property that is, um, that adjacent to the right-of-way. Actually, the right-of-way primarily sits on my property.
Okay.
And so this is the first time I became aware of it. I came on Monday and I had the opportunity to meet with the lady to get the information. So I have not been able to do my due diligence at this time. Um, so I'm not aware, um, I cannot fully speak on that except to say that, that we've been in that property for over 30 years. We have never been, um, made aware of ownership until that notice was posted. So I thank for the notice to be posted. We do have some concerns in terms of, um, not the right-of-way per se, because the right-of-way does exist in the deed. But the drawings that I saw that were submitted and the, and the, and the drawings that I have that are from that property do not line up when it comes to the way that the boundaries are created. So I'm a little bit concerned because the way that the right-of-way is modeled on the submitted drawings are not equal to my, um, titled, searched, and, um, see, I don't have the sealed one with me, the way that it depicts that right-of-way. So that there is a slight discrepancy in the way of that.
But you were aware and titled that there was a right-of-way?
Yes, I'm aware.
Okay.
It's also noted in the lever.
Okay, yep.
And it's, yes. And it's in the deed. Um, so to that extent, we are familiar with that and we're aware. It, like I said, more than 90% of it resides on our property, or 80 or 90% of it resides on our property and it borders, um, the attorney, the neighbor's property, which they'll speak about on it.
Sure.
Um, I do have some concerns. Um, do I raise them now or do you want me?
You can if they're.
Based on the application?
Yeah.
The application speaks to any other relief necessary? I'm just concerning because.
They're not asking for any other relief.
Okay, and this says in the application.
We have to, it's the advertisement, but the only relief here is to build on a lot
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that does not front a road.
Okay, and so in not fronting the road, the liability then will fall back on us. You know, if God forbid, something happened and the transportation or materials are coming over there. Um, also this, the cleaning of the snow removal, um, maintaining of that right-of-way road. None of that has been totally discerned or defined. I don't, I've never dealt with it right-of-way before. So I'm not even sure if those are questions that pertain to it, but I'm concerned about safety that way. There is such close proximity to already an existing building, which is our home. So the way that is depicted on the drawings that were submitted show no, no separation between the right-of-way and exactly the wall of our house. And in my drawings, it shows that there's a 17.2-feet clearance so between the way that is portrayed. So my concern is that the way that the cars or trucks will move through may affect the infrastructure that is already existing there and how would that be actually, the road will actually be used, right? Because, like I said, we've been there for over 30 years, neighboring the neighbors, um, that are adjacent to us is a wooded lot. So there is no other structure there in, in the same proximity except a dirt road and woods, right? And they're clear. So, I mean, what's gonna happen with this now? What's gonna happen with the construction coming through? Is it gonna be right into, on our home line? Um, are they gonna be able to obstruct it with, um, natural lines or built lines? I mean, natural lines meaning building trees that will reduce our ability to turn in the right-of-way, you know, or ability to maneuver it as we have it right now.
Well, legally, they can't do anything to the right-of-way.
Okay, so that's good.
The right-of-way, the meets and bounds that are on your deed
Mm-hmm.
are, are the meets and bounds of the right-of-way.
Excellent.
Block access in the right-of-way.
Excellent.
On, on any side, that's.
That's great.
That's part of what a right-of-way is.
Great. And then, and then my true concern also is the depiction of the right-of-way on the maps that were submitted to you versus the, what I have on my own.
We will check with our, our attorney and the building department regarding the, the maps.
I can, you mean the maps? You mean on the survey?
Yeah, on the ser, the survey that you have versus the survey that I have shows a different, a, a slight gap between the right-of-way and its house. The one that was submitted actually shows the line at the house. So versus us having a gap between the right-of-way and that wall, the right-of-way appears to end at a wall.
Well, do you have a, you have a recent survey with the right-of-way on it?
I have the, the survey that was in the deed, that was deeded with a deeded note and everything like that.
You wanna, so you could submit that to.
I can submit that.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't anything the building department's gonna look at.
Okay.
You know, the meets and bounds of it are.
Yeah.
But those meets and bounds doesn't reflect the same here.
Yeah.
But I could, I have a sealed one if you need me to bring a sealed copy.
But wherever you're comfortable.
And what I'm speaking of, and my main point to it Mm-hmm. is that you see how they intentionally put, you know, um, feet here and feet here to show the right-of-way should not literally go to the front structures, just that it's so close in the drawing that they couldn't properly.
Yeah, well, it looks like it's half a foot.
Yes, on one way, and then the other one shows a bit more.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
You see, when I say, well, the drawing, it shows like it's at the house.
Yep.
So that was.
Let me, just to clarify, and there might be some other members of the board. Are you objecting to the variance or concerned about the usage of the right-of-way?
I will, I would like to have just an opportunity to review that because this was in my deed and in my neighbor's deed. But I didn't get the opportunity to investigate the lot deed to see if that was transferred over because the person who sold the house was in relationship to Viola, who used to be there before, and the right-of-way was between her and us in terms of the property, not them, or not Viola, but the people that were there and descendants. So it was deeded in both her deeds, but I never got a chance to explore that lot deed to determine that. And I just would like the opportunity to, because I just really caught on to this, this weekend. And on Monday was my first time, but I work as an educator during the week. I can't really have the time to do the research to be able to respond to it. So I just need a little time to be clear, so, um.
Well, and I, I just, in response to that, which would, what I was going to say before is I, I absolutely want the board to have a second hearing on this because I just want, you know, Mr., I don't know whether or not the board's gonna have any questions, but there was a prior variance on this property. It was not configured the way that the variance, um, stated. There's supposed to be like a 25-foot flag on this property.
Correct.
So I'm, I'm happy to hear the neighbors have noticed of this. But I, I definitely would recommend having one more public hearing.
See what everyone has to say.
And if I can, so, I don't know if this is legible, but I can submit the actual right-of-way deed that is filed in the court, if, if you want that.
Yeah, we'll take it. I think we might have it, but we'll take it on our.
Okay. You don't have it?
I don't.
So, um, I can give you the number for it. Okay, if you want to take the number.
We have it in there. Do we have it in here, guys?
Okay, you, you can hold on to that and submit it later and then we'll get each other. Let's hear what everyone has to say.
I have a question for Ms. Hines.
Yes.
Have you seen the aerial photo of the property?
Yes, I have.
Okay, so it appears based on this, tell me if, if I'm correct, that you currently use part of the right-of-way. What's been identified as this right-of-way as your driveway for your property, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and that there's a, a boat parked in there and then?
No, there's no boat there. That's not a current view.
Okay, well, there's, uh, there's another vehicle in there. So you use that as your own personal driveway?
Correct. Like I said, right now, there was, it's wooded on the one side and there's been no, um, there's, yeah, behind there's also wood. We've had the property for 30 years.
Right.
Right? So you had, you had time there. We also have the dumpster that we've had there for over 25 years. We could get records at the end of that. Um, there's never been a, a problem or a dissenting opinion between the neighbors and us until this matter arose in terms, we were all curious as to what's going on, right? Um, rightly so, because it had never, it was never raised before. We didn't get anything in the mail. They could have sent it. We do have the, we do have the right address on the, on the tax map. It does come personally to us. We didn't get anything in the mail. They probably went, but we didn't get any correspondence in the mail. So the only notice that we have has been on this weekend, seeing the sign posted on the, on there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is, I'm Elsie Acevedo. I'm an attorney. And I'm here with the homeowner of Ms. Kamay.
Elsie, just, just by your first of last name.
Sure. E.L.S.I.E.A.C.E. V as in Victor, E.D.O.
Okay.
Acevedo. Ms. Kamay, who is the owner of 181 Flanders Road, her property, there's an entrance on Flanders Road and then the, the variance that he is requesting is on, her property is on the corner of Old Quag Road and Flanders Road. So the south part of her property is where this variance is being requested. She had, she just received notice, she did receive a notice, uh, by certified mail. I was just retained yesterday afternoon, so I've been trying to skip, run around looking for different paperwork. Uh, I have not been able to find the formal agreement, but I'm glad to hear that there's something recorded. And the, the only suggestion aside from that is that we would request that there be no parking on this road at any time, even if the, if the board grants the variance. Uh, my client is opposed to it.
For, for what, um, aside from the parking, because we, we can't regulate that and you can't park as a, as a matter of, you can't block a right-of-way, but their opposition is in terms of the variance that's being requested?
Yes, yeah. They weren't aware of it, actually. Uh, I, I looked at her deed. It's not on that deed. As far as a right-of-way, it's not gonna be, but it's not on that one, and I couldn't find it in the last, you know, I just found out about this case, uh, just a few hours.
We're gonna hold it open for down the road.
Yes.
For all purposes.
Yes, thanks.
Couple of weeks, maybe a month.
Okay, okay.
You know what I mean?
But there's nothing in her deed that says that the right-of-way is on it.
Exactly, no, none.
But there wouldn't be, because it's on the neighbor. I'm gonna give you some time.
I know, but I thought the neighborhood said that most of it was on her property, so I just.
That's correct, and, that's correct.
I, when I look at.
We would have to check the meets and, you know.
Right, I, I can't tell by this, but it looks like, um, it looks about half, let's say, half and half, but who knows?
And that could be as of use, not deeded, so.
Yeah, but on Mr. Brody's, you know, on Mr. Brody's survey, it presumably is mapped out, so I just.
Yeah, but it shows just the neighbor's property for the right-of-way.
Yes, it does, and he doesn't have any access to his property, so this would be requ. I know that he had approached my client, uh, to buy his property, uh, and they were working on that, but I'm not sure if he's still amenable to that idea.
It's beyond our purview, so, outside the meeting.
I'd like to mention, yeah, mention that.
Could I, uh, just ask a question?
Sure.
It shows on this survey that we're looking at dirt driveway that appears to be on your client's property. Is there any driveway existing there now?
Yes.
My understanding is that there is a dirt driveway.
The map that I gave you, Ms. Carver?
We can't take custody from the whole audience.
Got to come up with.
On this survey, it does depict a dirt driveway. The dimensions, I'm not sure.
That actually exists now?
Yes, and that there is, my client explained to me that there is a dumpster that seems to be like perpendicular or across the driveway and my client wasn't aware of this driveway, let's put it that way.
You can show the board.
Let me show you this or because you don't have.
No, I don't. I don't have yours.
If you see.
I think just what, while these guys were speaking, I think we should also, guys, refer this to the fire department and the ambulance district.
Okay, okay.
Can I have emergency access?
Access.
Guys, why don't you see if there's any more comments and maybe a.
Does it have the dimensions?
Yes, let's do that. Yes, I'm going to refer it down to.
All right, ladies, we're going to get back.
Somebody.
The wizard, yes. The wizard.
Yes.
Candace has got something to say.
That's submitted, yeah, we have it here in the record. The who, which department?
Fire and ambulance.
Emergency.
We're going to, all right, hold on, this is what we're going to do. Do you have anything else to say to us tonight?
Not at this point, no, but my client has the concerns also about the construction. Those are good points, liability and.
Which is beyond our ability. There's other departments in the town that could deal with that. We're going to hold this open for all purposes and we're going to get a referral from the fire department and ambulance departments for emergency access to make sure it would suffice.
Yes, I, when Mr. Brody and I had talked about this before he came to the ZBIA, I had asked him to reach out to them, but I think it's going to be more efficient if this, you know.
Yes, we're going to, I'm going to ask Candace to make that request.
Yeah, because it is relatively narrow.
Are you good with that, Helen? You're good with us requesting?
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Fire and ambulance.
Yeah, because eight feet is.
Correct.
Is not adequate for.
Well, we'll find out.
Or may not be adequate for fire and safety.
With that intent, my motion would be to, on behalf of Helen, to put this over to September 5th.
Second.
September 5.
Okay, Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Tuttle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We'll see you on September 5th.
Thank you.
Okay.
All purposes.
All purposes.
You guys can bring information.
You guys can do whatever you want to do.
Yep.
Okay, item eight on the agenda, somebody want to get Mr.?
Thank you very much.
We want to wake up.
Good evening, Mr. Burgess.
Wake up Mr. Grossman out there.
Tell Mr. Grossman to come back in.
All right, item eight on the agenda is Robert J. Lysit, 8 Hampton Road North, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-32-2-12. I could request the following relief from Town Code 330-11 Residential District's Table of Dimensional Regulations. One, for the proposed one-story dwelling in a non-conforming lot. A principal front yard setback of 40.1 feet where 60 feet is required from the westerly lot line, Rosehill Road. And two, a principal front yard setback of 30.2 feet to the dwelling and 25.2 feet to the covered porch attached to the proposed dwelling where 60 feet is required from the northerly lot line, Hampton Road North. And two, for the proposed one-story detached garage and accessory distance from street setback front yard of 30.2 feet where 70 feet is required from the northerly lot line, Rosehill Road. And two, an accessory distance from the street setback front yard of 60.2 feet where 70 feet is required from the easterly lot line, Noack Road, and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction?
Good evening. I just have to swear anybody in who isn't an attorney. If you can state your names and addresses, please.
Robert Lysit, 8 Hampton Road North, North Sea.
And sir?
Bill Leeds, 114 Edgemere Drive, North Sea.
And do you both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you can tell us about the application.
I'm going to start off and I'm going to tell it from the standpoint of why we're asking for this. It's a culmination.
I just say Bob is the owner and I'm the architect.
All right, okay. So he's going to talk nuts and bolts, I'm going to talk from the heart.
Okay.
This property has been in my family for 60 years. It's been our summer home exclusively, but the dream has always been to turn it into a permanent residence upon retirement. Unfortunately, my parents passed away before they were able to fulfill that dream. My older brother similarly passed away and I'm the legacy that wants to fulfill that dream in terms of turning into a permanent residency. It's a place that I've spent all my summers and in some ways it's very close to me and I want to fulfill that in a way that it reflects the architecture of a cottagey look as well as to pay back the people that have been so good to us over the years. The plumbing I'm going to have done by the Mahoney Plumbing who supported us for over 60 years in terms of supporting our summer residents, as well as the construction's going to be done by Corkwater, who actually grew up right across the street from our residence in 8 Hampton Road. And Bill Lee's, my architect, is my neighbor who's just down the block. So again, it's something that's dear to me and it's my next chapter in my life and hopefully it's just not one chapter, but many chapters.
Okay, all right. Okay, so to tell you a bit about the site, it's an unusual site. It's the first for me. It has three front yards. So we front Noack Road, so we have our issues there with noise that's developed over the years. And then we front a dirt road and then a paved road that was paved due to road assignments in the last 25 years. So we're surrounded on three sides by, by roads. We're actually locating the house further away than any neighbor. So we're actually, the existing house is 565 approximately square feet. It's a cottage bungalow. I believe it was used as like a summer place for somebody that lived in the town and they would go out there and, you know, this would be the country, I guess, back then. The lot was originally subdivided in 1926 approximately and I think their house, the little bungalow, which you see on the second page on SK2, in the upper left corner, the white and black house. So it's a 565 square feet where we're increasing the total lot coverage to a little under 2,000 square feet, including the garage and the house. We, the unusual thing about Hampton Road North is that's where the zoning changes from R15 to R40. So that's why I did a little diagram on, on SK1, just to, just to show the development of the cottages because in the R15, they're all on smaller lots, you know, smaller than a, than a half acre. Bob's lot is actually on a half acre across the street in R40 where current zoning R40 is one acre. So he's an existing non-conforming lot. We're proposing a modest one-story house of approximately 1,200 square feet and a barn, garage combination so he could store his boat in there. So it's a little longer than a typical garage would be, 32 feet long instead of perhaps 24 feet. We located, since we do have the three front yards, we chose the front yard to be the one along the dirt road and then the rear yard on facing Noack Road and using basically the garage to screen some of the noise and traffic that comes along pretty, pretty well nowadays.
Have you heard from any of the neighbors? Not to cut you off.
No, we have not.
Informally, I have. A neighbor across the street on Hampton Road North, very liked the idea because I will be a permanent resident. Most of the surrounding houses are still summer residents, so having someone there 24 by 7, 12 months a year is something that they think is a value.
We do see it as an improvement. I drive past this site on the way to my house, so even though I want to do even more architecture, he's leaving it as a modest addition. And it's a modest ranch house that's very similar to the neighbor house and it does fit in as, as best as one could.
In fact, the way I would describe it, the dream for me is living here year-round. The house is just a part of that dream, so it doesn't have to be monumental in its footprint.
So it's understood. Nope, fine. I know, I mean, it's a constrained lot, three front yard. The only question I had that I didn't see relief advertised for was the size of the garage.
Yeah, I think.
And I only say that because we, if the accessory structure is more than 25% in terms of square foot of the main dwelling, you have to come to this board for relief to.
That is, if it's more than 25%.
More than 25%.
The accessory building.
How big is the garage?
We have to.
And it appears to be.
Yeah.
No, but the garage is actually smaller than the.
Correct, but it's more than 25% of the.
Oh, more than, oh, okay, because we have such a small house.
Correct. So we need to hear about that.
Oh, right. I got you.
The two-car garage, but just longer because two-car garage is 24 feet wide. You're designing it deeper.
I can explain that.
We're only 20 feet wide, but.
The explanation I can offer.
Does it? Okay, I'm sorry.
The explanation is, is that a necessity? I have a Hunter 216 sailboat. It's not fiberglass, it's composite. It cannot be subjected to the elements outside, otherwise the hull will actually crack, which, unfortunately, I had an experience four years ago. As a result, it has to be stored inside. It's on a trailer that's approximately 27 feet in length and so therefore that kind of mandated having a longer garage to support that.
There's no, no proposed living space, bathroom.
No.
Two-car garage?
Right.
One car, one boat.
Yeah, so it's two-bays. I know Katie, maybe check with the building department because typically a two-car garage, they don't apply the 25% rule for. I thought, aren't they allowing? They're allowing a two-car garage even if it exceeds 25% without variance, really? Right, so they're like. So that might be what they're doing here when they reviewed it, but let's just, if you need a relief, we wanted to talk about it.
Oh, sure.
Come back.
Right, no, I think. And I can say, if I didn't have to have it, I wouldn't go that long, but because of the necessity of the boat structure.
They do have arenas, you know. They do have arenas that have, you know, went to storage, yeah.
I endorse. You have to find one that, that will support it reasonably.
Yeah, I'm sure you could find one indoors, sir.
If it came to it. Is there anybody here?
The, the other thing is if it turns out that you need relief for the, for the garage, for the size of the garage versus the, the primary structure, we would need the percentage. So we need something in writing, the percentage of the garage versus the, the size of the house.
Guess it's about 60%.
About 50, 60%, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I would guess too, but we need something in writing on that.
Submit a letter.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
How will we get the answer to that?
He's going to submit the letter and I will confirm with the building department whether it should be included in the decision.
Is everyone okay with it if we need relief for it? Well, let's see if anybody's here.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Okay, is there anyone from the public who would like to be here this evening, can't you with the application of Lysit? Am I pronouncing me correct?
Lie down on the couch, sit in a chair, Lysit.
Lysit, for 8 Hampton Road North and North Sea.
Not the first time you said that, huh, Bob?
Okay. If not, well, why don't we just talk a little bit about the, if it turns out that they need relief for the, for the garage.
I'm okay with it because it's a two-car garage. It's not.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I am as well.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Tom, you okay with it? Okay, all right.
All right, so we're going to get the clarification on the two-car garage being larger than 25% of the size of the home. And if we get that clarification in time.
And his letter.
And your letter. You're going to submit a letter regarding that. If we get that by, the next meeting is August 15th, right?
Yes.
So if we get that by August 11th, whatever that Monday is, the 12th, we'll have a decision for you on the 15th. It comes after the 12th.
Oh, you're getting a good one.
Will, it'll be the following meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Tithill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies. Waiting for a break, or what?
Just do one more.
Yes, sir. Whatever you wish.
Just thank you.
We're on a roll.
We're on a roll. Keep it moving.
Yeah, 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 yeah. You know what happens when you're on a roll.
You changed it?
Yeah. All right. Item nine on the agenda is Old Quag Development LLC, 90 Old Quag Road in Flanders, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-139-3-34. This was adjourned from our June 6th meeting.
So I just have to swear anybody in who isn't an attorney?
I'm an attorney.
Okay, you can state your name and address, please.
Daniel Hodgkin, 35, 80 Fifth Avenue, Florip Park, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Okay, you can tell us about the application.
Sure. Oh, sorry.
Yes.
It's Patricia Stern.
Stern.
Stern, S.T.E.R.N.
S.T.E.R.N.
Yep. Okay, so, hi. Good evening.
Evening.
So this is a property on 1159 West Main Street, Riverhead, New York. The application is to appeal the determination by the building inspector who determined there was insufficient documentation to establish that there was an order repair business open to the public since, prior to 1957.
Couldn't find the affidavits.
Couldn't find them?
Or you didn't have affidavits?
We had three. He still said no.
Okay.
So.
The affidavits that said it was in existence prior to 57?
Would you like me to show them to you?
It was actually a church across the street and the women in the church.
And you guys just got, you also just got a copy of the building inspector's files today. You just got this today.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
So these are the three affidavits that we have.
You don't have to submit them.
If we, if you already submitted them, we don't need them a second time.
No, you didn't submit them, but we, as part of an appeal, Candace is supposed to make a copy of the building inspector's.
Okay.
So we have them.
We have them.
You probably just got them today.
But if you want to resubmit them, you can resubmit.
Okay, just to be on the safe side. I'm not sure if this other stuff was, was submitted, but there's also a newspaper article from 1956 discussing a fire at the public garage, which gutted the garage, but the concrete walls were still standing, so they built a new roof and they continued what it said was a truck repair and, sorry, very small. They called it a, hold on. Truck garage and repair shop, so I'll hand that into you. And then I believe that this was also handed into the building department, but the property in the 50s was owned by the Gallo family and they ran a truck repair garage out of it and these are copies of receipts for truck parts. And there was also notices from unemployment because apparently that was still a thing in 1957. Bill from the lighting company and then we also have some photographs showing what the property looks like now in case there is a single-family home in the front of the property. The garage is located in the rear of the property. As you can see from the survey, most of the property between the house and the concrete garage is either paved or has a dirt driveway. And that's about it.
Has it been continually, continually used as this, the business over, over the years?
All, all three of the affidavits establish that it was.
Okay, is it currently being used for that purpose?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that is an auto mechanic in it.
There's also a similar business, two houses down or two properties down, so I'll submit that also and.
So just let me mention just a little bit about this kind of application. We don't, we don't get them that often. We get them every, here and there. And so basically if the chief buildings inspector makes a determination, which the chief buildings inspector did in this case, you, it is appealed to us and it's as if it's a new application, really. So, and, and often when we have these hearings, we get a lot of information that the building department may not have previously had. I don't know whether that's the case here, but often it gets, you know, we get more detail. And so what do we look for in terms of establishing that a, a business or other, or could even be, be a residence, I suppose, in certain circumstances, you know, operated back prior, prior to zoning? We look at affidavits from people who were familiar with what was going on in the property going all the way back. We also sometimes look at aerial photographs to see that the structure was there and that the structure remained there throughout the period of time, but the aerial photographs for this type of application are only of limited use, really, because it's about the use of the property as opposed to the structures themselves. So, you have three affidavits. That's usually pretty convincing.
We have to look at the dates on the affidavits.
Okay.
To look at the affidavits.
Okay.
And even, you know, even, I mean, I don't know, maybe you have it in a narrative, but, you know, even some of these receipts, I mean, they're addressed as 94 Quad Road.
Well, Mr. Hodgkin can explain that to you. He actually...
It actually, it actually used to be, it used to be one whole lot, and prior to us purchasing it, the owner subdivided it. So that's why it was called 94. We own 90, 92, and 94.
And then eventually they were split up, the lots?
Well, right before we bought it, it was split in half.
Okay.
What year was that?
2002. One?
You know, we, we need proof of that. I mean, you have to submit more, I mean, clearly this wasn't enough for the chief building inspector, so those are probably some of the issues that he raised. I mean, let's, you know, and the other thing that's weighing against you is that there is a, somebody applied for pre-existing CO for this property, and they didn't ask for the garage, right? I mean, there's a pre-existing CO in the property for...
90.
The dwellings, right?
There's a pre-existing CO for the, for, yes, for the garage and for the dwelling.
Nobody said at that time, oh, there was a auto mechanic shop on this property.
Often, you know, 10, 20 years ago, the uses weren't included in the CO, so he got the CO for the structure, but not necessarily for the use.
Yeah.
I mean, it says four-car garage. Certainly, I would think in 2002, people were trying to lock down...
There's no way it's a four-car garage. It's 30 feet by 50 feet.
Well, that's what the CO says.
It's got 213...
Did you apply for the CO?
No, I think the previous owner did.
Yeah. So, you know, we just got the building department file tonight.
Okay.
And there may be further questions, I don't know. I mean, one thing I do want to take a look at closely are the three affidavits.
Okay.
I want to make sure that the affidavits actually specifically state that this use was in existence continuously, from prior to zoning in 57, in October 57, through the present. That's what's conclusive. So if the affidavits are more nuanced and don't really pin it down quite that way, then that creates some issues.
Okay.
And I don't know whether it does or doesn't. I have a...
Right. Two of the affidavits are, just so you know, are from neighbors. So one of them is from the president of the church across the street, and, you know, she tests, she attests to the fact...
She's like 80 years old, so she, you know, she knows how long, what's been going on.
Because I know you're gonna ask about neighbors, you know, did the neighbors, so two of the neighbors gave those affidavits, and then Mr. Hodgkin's company owns three of the other neighbors, and then one of them is a similar order repair store, so...
Well, we have to go through all of it and figure out whether this is sufficient or not. So I'm not sure that we want to close the public hearing tonight.
No.
I don't think so. Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Just because we got it today, and that's not...
No, it's fine.
We just got the paperwork we got here, so...
No problem, no problem at all.
Yeah.
All right.
But anything else that you wanted to tell us?
No, I think that's it.
That's pretty much it?
Mm-hmm.
I had another question. You said it was, you said it was part of a, it was part of a larger lot, right? Where the, maybe this use existed on all of the lots?
You see the driveway in the middle? That separates the two lots.
But was, I mean, is your testimony that the use was on all of these lots, or just on your lot?
It was just on what is now 92.
It was always just in that area.
Yeah.
Here's a picture that kind of explains it to you?
We can't have commentary from the audience. If you want to comment, you can come up and I'll call you up, okay?
Well, you're 90.
Here's a photo that'll, that'll... So this is the property line right here. So this is the garage and the use here. This is the single-family dwelling in front, and then from here over are two other single-family dwellings. They had nothing to do with the actual garage. So from this point over...
It was one big lot that was subdivided into three, and only...
No, into two.
Into two. All right, so one lot has two houses?
Yeah.
And then another lot has a house and a business as well?
Right.
And I went there, and of course, all I saw was, I guess, the house in the front, so I didn't walk back. So I guess the garage was behind.
Behind.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And there's nothing, I mean, the, all of the receipts that you submitted are from 57. Do you have anything continuously? Like, who ran the property after, like, tracking each owner?
Right.
Do you have anything on that? Does just because it existed in 57 doesn't mean it hasn't been abandoned?
I kind of got all the proof going way back to show...
Sure.
You know, it was all the way back then that it was in use.
But it has to be continuous.
Yeah.
So more information would be helpful in terms of who was operating...
The truck repair's been there the whole time.
We're just asking, because maybe there was one owner running the shop for, you know, 10 years, another owner running it for another 20. I don't know.
Right.
But the more detail we can, we have in the record, the better for you. So I would suggest, if you can gather more information, that you can submit to us. It only helps your case.
Great.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, hon.
Before we're done, any other questions, members of the board? Now, is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening, connect you with the application of Old Quag Development LLC? This is for 90 Old Quag Road in Flanders. Okay, if not, I have a lead. When would you like to come back?
One of my choices?
Well, we have a...
I did not like the August 15th date.
Well, then our next date is September 5th, if that works for you.
Okay. Does that work? Okay.
Okay, all right. So I would move that we hold the application open for all purposes until our September 5th meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair of Tsai? Thank you for being here, have a good night.
Thank you.
Can I put this in the file?
Yep.
Additional copies of the chief building inspector's files?
No problem. Thank you. Break? Or one more? I think we, I think we want a break.
You can keep going if you want.
Keith wants a break.
Well, I'm sorry, what was the date? That 9?
9/5. Okay, so I think the consensus is we're gonna take a short break, except...
He won't read if we do it.
He refuses to read the next one. So there, there it is. We're gonna take a short break, folks. We are back on.
Yeah, we are back on.
We are.
All right, so we are going to move on to item 11 on the agenda, which is Hampton Cove Realty. 4 Penny Lane, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-323-2-6.1. This is held over from our May 16th meeting.
So, don't have to swear again, Kevin, but if you just state your name and then maybe give us an update.
Yep, Kevin Springer, 61 Channing Cross, Hampton Bay, New York, 11946. Actually, I was hoping you were gonna give me the update as we're waiting on the secret from the planning department.
Ooh, okay.
Yeah.
Wow, the other way around.
I've actually had several conversations with Mr. Treza, but I don't know what the absolute latest was, as he was not in today.
We had a planning board resolution.
Yeah, we had it, maybe a meeting or so ago.
Yeah.
Yep. We have a resolution from the planning board that...
Conditional negligence.
Yeah, conditional negligence that was received on July 22nd. So, just a little over a week ago. So, that's what they decided to do. An identified positive environmental issue which will be avoided or substantially mitigated by the following conditions. The sixth cottage will be made affordable rental unit under the town's workforce housing program, which helps address the town, address the housing issues. And the property lies within the high priority water quality improvement zone, and therefore, the installation of a new innovative alternative onsite wastewater treatment system for the entire site shall be required.
Which, okay, so this is official then, that was, we had discussed this at length. I have spoke to my client. He is readily available to do this. Looking forward to doing it. Putting this behind us. It's gonna be quite the undertaking, it's gonna be quite a system, but it's, you know, he just wants to, he wants to be on the up and up, so he's more than willing to meet these issues.
He can convert it back to a garage.
What's that?
He can convert it back to a garage.
No, he would, he would, he doesn't mind. He's like, you know, listen, you know, the systems can use an update anyway. So even if we were to ever do anything on the property, we would automatically have to go to an IA system, even just for one. So to do all at once actually is better than doing them one at a time. We had spoke to Marty a while back. You know, he would have recommended that, even though we are within the, you know, we're outside his realm, not by much, but we just make that, but that would have been the same issue. As for the workforce housing, I mean, he's probably the, the ones that are legally rented right now, probably all fall within that guideline anyways, they're all one-bedroom cottages, so...
Excuse me? You're saying all these cottages are one-bedroom?
One, except for the one down by the water. There's one all the way at the water.
Yes, and how many?
That has, that's a three-bedroom. It's four one-bedrooms, a three-bedroom, all legal. The garage, which is what we're here for, will be a two-bedroom.
That small garage is gonna be a two-bedroom?
It's not as small as...
I visited the property many, many, many times.
I can tell you the square footage of it if you'd like.
I'm concerned that the prior decision conditioned it on no further expansion or change, and they built this out after.
Okay. Well, I mean, we've, that's been, we've been down that road before, but as, we all know that's been granted before. This is not the first one that has, you know, been down there. And I brought into 300 Montauk Highway, Shinnecock Hills, which you didn't fully agree with me, but to a degree, I mean, it's, it's almost the same. I don't see how it's any different.
I think it's completely different. It's a different property, different set of circumstances.
But it was also, it's a non-conforming, and was asking for the same relief.
That doesn't make them similar. That's just because they asked for the same thing.
Right.
Or a similar thing, but on a different property.
Well, so, yeah, but I know they're different properties, but how are they different in...
You have to tell me how they're the same.
Well, it's the same setup. You have, you know, multiple units.
I disagree. I think it's a concern down there, and regardless of what happened previously, I think every case is viewed, you know, on its own.
I understand that, but when you say "down there," what exactly does that mean?
The property you just listed, down the road?
Yes.
I view that differently, in my opinion.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying I don't, I obviously do not agree with that. We're, we're much smaller considerably, as a matter of fact. You know, this, and this was basically being run as a hotel, where ours were legal cottages. You know, that's, I think actually ours is, in my opinion, is a little bit easier than, I mean, he also asked for multiple reliefs, which we're not, we're asking for one relief.
But you'd be adding to the full, you'd be adding the density full-time?
Right. To a degree, yes.
Well, how do you do a degree?
Every degree.
But the density, here, here in my, my point in Hampton Bay is, which is a dense community to begin with.
I'm saying for this property specifically. This would be a full-time residence.
Yes.
So it would be, it would be full-time, and it'd be increased density from what was permitted then?
True, but that's what I'm asking for the relief for, is, that's, that's the point of it. But it's been, obviously, it wasn't an issue when it, let's restate that, when it was being rented illegally at the time...
We didn't know about that. You were renting it illegally?
It's been known about it for a while, but still. I mean, it just, to me, I don't see how, I mean, I know the word "density," how it's used, but I don't see in that area, it's a, it's a rather large lot, and that one lot, which has been divided, will technically only have the one property on it. Whereas the, all the other ones are on the other side.
Has it been divided, I mean?
Well, it was, it was divided at one point. The lot was down, so if you look...
No, that's what's outstanding. It has never been divided. That, isn't that, the prior variance talked about dividing it?
Yes.
It has not been divided. It's one lot right now.
No, but if it was to be divided, that would be the one lot.
But it hasn't been.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying if we were to do that...
Are you proposing to do that?
No, not yet.
Because that would, I mean, that...
It would change.
It certainly would change. And you're reducing your density.
Right.
And you're doing what the ZBA had asked you to do, what the applicant had asked to do before.
Well, the client wanted to wait until we heard the secret first, is that, that's how he wanted to play it. I don't, you know, I can't answer for him for that one.
Is he now prepared to move forward with the division?
I would think yes. We've discussed it on multiple occasions. I've talked to the Board of Health. They would, they don't see, foresee any problems with it. And again, no matter what, we would still have to do this whole IA system, whether we keep it separate, keep it one or separated. Either way...
If you separate it, we'd be more consistent with the previous decision.
True.
But you're gonna have to come back to the sport and decept about it.
Right. Well...
We have to honor the previous decision.
I understand what you have to do, but I have to ask, you know, he's obviously trying to do it the least, the minimal way. If you were given, if you give him the relief, then he doesn't have to do that. If he doesn't get the relief, then he has to do that.
Then he, he wants to ignore the previous decision?
He's not ignoring it. He's, yeah, he was asking for the relief. That's not ignoring it.
Well, well, the conversion without, without the permits was, you know, that's a factor. That's a factor to be considered. But it doesn't help. Well, put it that way.
I understand that.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm getting a sense that there are some concerns here about where we're going with this. So I don't know whether the majority of the board wants to see you speak with your client about the concept of subdivision.
Because that would be important in my decision.
Has the applicant been before the board?
No. The applicant is actually in Africa at the moment.
Well, this is an as-built, you know, this is also an as-built situation.
Right.
Did he convert it?
It is.
He did not. He did not.
He bought it this way with it already being converted?
Yes.
So he just wouldn't have, have any knowledge as to how this, this transpired?
I've asked him on multiple occasions, and he's, I, he doesn't know.
Yeah.
He doesn't know the previous owner.
Right, and I'm sure, I know we asked about it in the...
Yeah, we came up from the very beginning.
We did, yeah. Yeah, okay. But the bigger issue is, I don't know that what's in front of us right now has...
Been affronting.
Has, has support.
I'd like to know if he's gonna go forward with what the previous decision was. That's important to me.
No.
Making this determination.
Okay. How do we want to handle the response since he's not back for probably a week or so?
Well, I think we're gonna have to keep it open.
Come back.
Come back, but, you know, we have...
Well, can we put it back on for the 15th to give that decision and then move forward from there? What his decision is?
Say that again?
Can we put it back on for the 15th for his decision, or should, or do we just want to keep, if he give you an answer, yes or no, and then go from there?
Well, why don't you, if you could, share with him that if he decides that he does not want to do the subdivision...
Doesn't sound like he's going to...
That he, that he, in all likelihood, does not have the votes...
Okay.
For this, this application to, to be approved. I'm just, I'm spacing that...
Well, I, I get the feeling, I...
Yeah, yeah. So if you can relay that to him, I think he might want to seriously consider, you know, going about this with, with the subdivision.
But even with the subdivision, you're, you're still increasing the density.
Oh, I understand. I understand.
But to a less degree.
Well, and we, but we, we also want to get closer to what the...
What the decision was.
That's, that's...
It's adding density where there was no density.
Right, right.
It's not like there's, you know...
Yeah, and, and even if he decides to do the subdivision, it's not a guarantee that we're still gonna have four votes.
I understand that.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm just, you know, trying to kind of lay it, lay it all out there in terms of where my, my sense of things from...
That's what I can ask for.
Yeah. All right, so we do have a little bit of room left. Do we have room left on, Jennifer, the 15th?
Yes, you only have 12.
Okay.
On when?
The 15th, the next meeting.
Well, and also, I mean, the, you know, if the, if the board is, you know, if you were even considering allowing it with the subdivision, I don't, do we have the numbers on how much the expansion is of the non-complaining use?
No, I can get you that.
We need it, and, you know, the board should also discuss whether or not you're gonna allow any further expansion if you allow this down here.
Well, I know that answer.
Yep. All right. Any other questions, members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening, connect you with the application of Hampton Cove Realty LLC? Or is it, what number, Penny Lane? For 4 Penny Lane in Hampton Bay. Okay. If not, I will move that we adjourn the application for all purposes, all purposes until our August 15th meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Mr. Tunnill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chief of.
Okay, item 13 on the agenda is Joseph F. Ceravolo, 9 Corwin Lane, Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-259-212. This is held over from our June 20th meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening.
P.S. McCully, 41 Meeting House Lane, Southampton, for the applicant. The applicant is here along with the architect, August Muff.
Could you speak up a little, please?
I'm here with the architect, August Muff, and with the applicant, and I think they were previously sworn, so I don't know how you want to handle that.
Just when they speak, they can just state their names, we're good.
If they're going to write.
Yep.
Since the last hearing, the, there's been a revision in the plans. I think you have that, you have the revised plans that are dated July 6th of 2019?
Yes.
Okay, and, and a survey dated July 30th of 2019, which contains an error on the four tents that's been brought to my attention. I have the letter from Dennis O'Rourke, if you have that. I've already got a copy of that and I'm aware of it. I just want to make some comments for the record, make sure the record is clear, so bear with me a little bit. The property consists of approximately 16,640 square feet. It is a true corner lot with three front yards, located in a FEMA floodplain zone of AE 9, and that requires, together with the freeboard, 11 feet of height to meet the FEMA requirements and the state code requirements. In addition, the property is within 200 feet of wetlands, which requires the applicant to comply with the wetlands setbacks. In fact, the applicant has taken extreme measures in designing the proposed dwelling and its proposed location in order to meet both setbacks from wetlands while minimizing the amount of zoning relief necessary. The applicant has obtained an administrative wetlands permit to allow the proposed dwelling and sanitary system. I asked the board, is that part of your record? Do you know?
I haven't seen that.
Okay. For the record, I'm gonna hand up a copy for each member of the board. God bless you.
And Tim, we got the, the letter from Dennis O'Rourke dated.
Today.
Today.
Yeah, that's okay, I have, I have it, yep, I have it, I know the contents of it and will address that.
Okay.
During the hearing, uh, I believe it was June 20th or.
The last meeting?
Yeah.
6:20.
Yeah.
6:20.
Yep.
Right, June 20th. There was a discussion about the single and separate, and I know that you seem satisfied about that. I just want to point out that the only lot adjacent to this lot is the Northerly Lot, which is 7 Corwin. That lot was developed in 1999, so there isn't any way to undo that. It now has a dwelling on it. Furthermore, the single and separate abstract shows that this property was separated in 1971, and I believe at that time, these properties were in the C-zone. And under C-zone, which is 15,000 square feet, we would, this lot and Corwin would meet the regulations for the C-residence Zone. And at that time, no planning board was required for any subdivision, and because it was a minor subdivision, that didn't come into effect until 1975, and the Health Department didn't take these into consideration, and they weren't development actions and the Health Department regs for less than five lots until 1981. So I think this is a single and separate lot. Then the second issue that came up was the drainage. The proposal before you includes three pools, drainage pools, with leaders and gutters. That's, that's fully complies with the town requirements, engineering requirements. Furthermore, in connection with the wetlands application, the new sanitary system is designed, required a certain amount of fill. Working with Marty Shay, the applicant, and I got a little involved at the end of that, but with the diligence of August Muff and the applicant, the original design of 541 cubic yards of fill necessary for that sanitary system was eventually whittled down to what it is now, 197 cubic yards. And the retaining wall that was originally designed has been removed. So we've done all of that in an effort to satisfy Marty Shay's concern about the drainage. As opposed to that, on 7 Corwin, when that house was built, they brought in 1,000 cubic yards of fill, according to the building plans on file in the Building Department. One other thing, there was some talk about view shed and view of the water and stuff. This, I'm not aware, and maybe your counsel can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not aware of anything in the code or state law that protects the view shed unless you have a private governing. That's where it is. So if there was reliance on that, well, we thought we were gonna be able to see the water forever. That's not true, but we don't, our design doesn't have to protect that. I mean, we don't have to shove it in somebody's face, which we're not, but on the other hand, it's not our job to protect somebody's view. By the same token, there's a lot behind 7 Corwin that's undeveloped. When that gets developed, they'll be looking at 7 Corwin, not the water, because 7 Corwin got developed, and that's the way it goes. One after the other, and if you really want to have a view that's absolutely protected, you build on the water. Otherwise, you're at risk. That's all I have to say about that. Now, turning to the relief that was requested, I think this is, given the, the fact that there's three front yards here, the size of the lot, the wetland setbacks, all of which had to be met, the, the new IA system that has to be installed, these are pretty modest, in my view, and my history with this board, this is pretty modest pyramid relief and setback relief. Anyway, getting to the pyramid relief, you asked if, if the applicant could reduce the ceiling heights in the house from the nine feet to, I think, eight feet, whatever it is. That was done. So we've now, as a result, the pyramid relief, instead of being the original 1,379, has now been reduced to 765 cubic feet. Which I personally, don't take this wrong, but personally, I think, I think that was an imposition on this applicant, I think it was unfair based upon the history of this board and what you've granted on other applications, but in no, in any case, it's been done. The next relief is the front yard, 49.8 for the, for the house. Now, keep in mind, and we have a wetlands permit, and under 330-83K, I think we're entitled to a 50%, a 50% reduction on that front yard to 30 feet. Same goes for the relief for the front yard setback for the decks, which is the request for 43.7 feet. Also, one of the decks, a little bit of the deck, the most egregious, if you will, setback intrusion is actually the second floor balcony, which is, which is in fact the balcony under the code, and it can encroach into a front yard eight feet. So we're looking at like one foot difference there. But nonetheless, with all of that said, we're still asking for the relief that was advertised.
They didn't move the stairs from 11, 9 to 12?
No, the stairs are all moved, I'm talking about the deck, just the deck. The stairs, you asked the stairs, because it was really de minimis, and quite frankly, the Building Department can give, give up the six inches de minimis, but it was all moved. So it's now 12, so it's an encroachment of four into the side yard, which is allowed because they're uncovered steps. So under the code, that's the relief we, that we need. I think it's very modest relief.
Yeah, well, I appreciate your efforts in getting all this done.
Absolutely.
We do have to hear what the neighbors have to say.
I know.
Right, but, uh, it's, uh, it is a constrained law, we know that. Questions from members of the board?
Nope.
Pardon me?
All right.
I made the reference, that's for sure.
Okay, is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Ceravolo? No, I'm pronouncing it right. 9 Corwin Lane in Hampton Bays.
Yes.
Okay, you can either have, go over to the podium or have a seat, whatever.
I'll get it, the way you want it.
You can grab a chair if you want, okay.
I've not been sworn in.
You were sworn in, so you can just.
I was not sworn in.
You were not sworn in, okay, so you can state your name and address.
My name is Megan Curley, I live at 7 Corwin Lane, Hampton Bays, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing about the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Curley, C-U-R-L-E-Y. No worries.
Okay.
So I just, I would just like to say, things aside, I have lived there 19 years. We bought that lot with the understanding that the other two would not be developed. Obviously, if we hadn't known that 19 years ago, we would have purchased somewhere else. So I understand that they are looking to develop their property, it's their property, we're not telling them not to, but we're asking for them not to put their deck right next to our deck where I'm reaching out and I can take a, you know, salt off their table. There has to be some kind of concession that we've lived there 19 years. I mean, it doesn't seem right that they just want to change everything so they can put in what they want to put in. I mean, it just doesn't seem right. I just want to say that. My husband's gonna yell at me later for talking. Thank you.
All right, thank you for comments. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard?
Don't yell on it.
I can't promise that.
Yes, I believe you were previously sworn in.
Yes, I was, and with my admonition, I am an attorney, but I am here in the capacity as a homeowner, Stephen Curley, 7 Corwin Lane.
Okay.
I wanted to, first of all, thank, apparently, the efforts that are being made to revise this, but I have to, I have to say that I have yet to see, nor have we been shown any of the new plans. Chair's admonition before we ended, the last session was that folks would try to get together and try to work this out, and I appreciate, apparently, some effort is being done to address the pyramiding issue, which was my primary concern when I addressed before, but it hasn't been shared with us. We asked for elevations, they asked to have a chance to take a look at it, we haven't heard it. Perhaps counsel, I can speak afterwards and we make some further progress when it comes to this, but.
Mr. McCully will talk, yeah?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and as far as what's been submitted, I'm not sure what's, I mean, we have what was submitted to, you know, to, to our, into our file, which should be available.
Correct, but this is the first I'm learning about a July 6th revision of the plan, as well as Mr. O'Rourke's letter, apparently.
We just got them yesterday.
You got them as well, so.
Right.
I don't, I haven't had the chance to evaluate that. So with that in mind, I, I wanted to add to, uh, to the record that we've gotten two additional neighbors who have, would like to supply some declarations in opposition to the application. These are neighbors at 10 Corwin Lane and 22 Corwin Lane. These are properties that are across Corwin Lane, and I raise them, and I have copies for distribution. I raise them primarily because the concerns of these neighbors, and I'm doing my best to paraphrase those concerns, relate to the fact that this is adjacent to the boat drop, the town boat drop that is at, at the end of Corwin Lane. The survey that was originally provided showed Tiana Bay, but didn't show the boat drop. The area that the proposed driveway for this structure is being cut in would cut into the area where people are parking their cars now, along Corwin Lane, when they drop their boats off and they go in. The placement of the driveway where it is could potentially interrupt upwards of two or three parking spaces on that side of the street. Parking is not allowed on, on the other side of the street, so I would, I'd suggest, and I know this is not necessarily the purview of this board, but perhaps transportation and traffic safety could evaluate the impact of having that driveway placed where it is. I have not, again, without the benefit of seeing this new plan, I've heard a pretty, approximately 50% reduction in the intrusion on the, on the pyramiding issue. That could substantially address some of the issues that we have that are, are private to 7 Corwin Lane, namely the, namely the view, which I appreciate is the, is the bailiwick of easements, view easements, and a private issue between the, with, between the two adjoining landowners and not before the zoning board. But to echo what Mrs. Curley has said, we, when we purchased, we had a right to rely upon the zoning that was in place.
I don't know what that means, a right to rely upon.
Well.
Okay, I really don't know what that means, okay? We are the zoning board of appeals, we hear appeals from anyone townwide who wants to ask for a variation from the zoning.
Correct, and the presumption is that there would have to be a special exception made to the zoning rules. That's the only presumption that we had to, we had to rely upon, and that's, that's what I'm, what I'm acting here. So my suggestion, and subject to the board, now the council's involved and we've heard about a revised plan, I would suggest that he and I be able to confer, we might be able to iron out some of the issues that have been addressed by not only myself, but by the other neighbors, and we could end up reporting back to the board, either with a shorter set of issues that we have complaints over, or potentially some resolution to this matter, so that'd make your decision a little bit easier. Thanks.
Do we have a willingness to have that conversation?
My decision is gonna be very easy at this point, I gotta tell you.
I have to tell you, Mr. Chairman, you know me, I don't, I'm not gonna foreclose that, I'll listen to anybody. I have an extra set of plans here, I'll be relent to share them with Mr. Curley.
Okay.
But Mr. Curley should keep in mind that under 330-83K, there's a 20-foot, under the zoning, there's a 20-foot side yard setback in R60. Say there was no wetlands or anything, we would, but because there's wetlands, we get the right to reduce that lot, that side yard by 50%. We could get down to 10 feet, but we're not doing that. We're getting as far away as we can and still satisfying Marty Shay and the wetlands law. So that's the compromise that we've made, and it, you know, we could get closer, and as far as the view goes, whether the house is in the middle of the lot or it's 15 feet away from, from the side yard, still gonna block the view. And I just want, for the record, I'm gonna hand up an email that the applicant got from Mr. Curley a while back, and it said, he's looking to buy the property, and he couldn't, and he's saying, "Given their size, low elevation, and setback requirements, they would appear to be of limited utility to third parties, but may be of value to us, given our long-term plans for our property. Would the current owner have any interest in selling them?" So there was no answer to this, so here we are today.
Well, let me, let me.
That's outside.
And for the record, I made that inquiry long before this application was made.
But, but, but let me, let me put it this way, okay? We cannot force the parties to negotiate, to communicate, we cannot force the parties to listen to each other, but, but it always is better, in my view, for neighbors to get along whenever possible. So I, you know, and I think I speak for the rest of the board, saying we, we have tried to encourage a line of communication, and that's as much as we can do. Other than that, unless there's an agreement between two sides, either, you know, we have to decide the application that's before us. So we have a revised application that's in front of us. I do want to give you some time to respond, since, just like us, you, you just got the papers in, in a written submission.
We don't have a problem with that.
Okay, but other than that, I just don't get a sense here that, that there's a, really, a willingness to have, you know, a dialogue about further changes. I think the applicant is pretty much, you know, made the revisions to their, to their application, and I think that's where they want to stay.
Yeah, this is a, this is a very modest house, it's three bedrooms. I mean, it's not like we're building six bedrooms or something, or asking for some kind of a McMansion. But, Mr. Chairman, you know me, I'll go out in the hall and talk away.
Well, we could, we could second call it.
No, 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 we'll second call, we'll take the adjournment call, we'll just schedule it for another night.
Okay, we could do that, we could do that.
How much time you guys need to chit chat? January, February?
No.
No, I would, I would suggest that if you put it over to the first meeting in September, that'd be more than sufficient.
First meeting in September, or you want to do it in August?
Do you have room in August? We're running out of room in August.
Are you holding it over or are you closing for decision or submission?
Sounds like we're, sounds like we're holding it open, is that what you want, Keith? Is that what we want to do? Do you want to hold it open?
Give it one more shot, even though I really don't want to hear it anymore.
Yeah.
What about written? Can we do written?
I'm not sure.
Do what?
Can we do written? Can we do written?
I'm good with written subs and closing the public hearing at this point.
Okay. All right, written subs.
Okay, then we'll do this, we'll do this.
Fine, Lenny.
Okay.
Because I don't think there's gonna be, I'm sort of with you, I don't think there's gonna be much movement here.
Not in terms of the dialogue, I mean, I, I mean, between now and whatever date we, we pick, nothing precludes you from having a line of communication and letting us know.
Applicant has made a good effort to satisfy some of you guys' problems. I mean, 1,379 cubic feet to start with is not astronomical to begin with, but they're not, they're not.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to move that we close the public hearing tonight except for written submission. The only question in my mind is how long we want for written subs, and whether, I presume both sides want to have, you want to submit something and then Mr. McCully can respond to it. We have, this won't be on for decision until September 5th, so we have, and we have three weeks between our second, our second meeting in August and the September 5th meeting, so we could do written subs, two weeks of written subs, and then another week, I don't know, for a response.
So that would be 16th of August, everybody has their stuff in, is that what you're saying?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm thinking the 16th of August for, for you and anybody else amongst, amongst neighbors, and then a week after that, the 30th, we could do the 30th.
Okay.
Okay, for, and so.
So it'll be on for decision on the 5th of September?
That's correct, that's correct.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, can we, can we change that?
We can change that. We can change that.
Because if, if Mr. McCully says Mr. McCully on the 30th, I wouldn't have time to get into it because we'll close that Monday.
Sure, okay.
Your meeting's on Thursday.
Okay, so I'll do it the Wednesday, the 4th?
The 28th?
28?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we have the 16th, and then Mr. McCully the 28th?
That's, that's fine, yes, and I'll try to get it even earlier.
Okay, so the, so I will move that we close the application for, for all purposes, except for written submissions, being whatever submission the neighbors want to, want to make by 4:00 PM on August 16th, to hear a town hall, to our Secretary Candace, that the response to the submissions by the applicant, and anyone on behalf of the applicant, including Mr. McCully, will be due by August 28th at 4:00 PM, and we will have a decision ready on September 5th.
And we'll, we're going to correct the survey, Dennis wanted to, he wanted to show the 410 segment, though I don't think we need it, but I'm going to show it.
Okay, so in addition, there'll be another written sub being amendments to, a revised survey?
Right, and that's mandatory.
Okay, very good.
Second.
All right, Mr. Hahn.
Hi.
Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Mrs. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Tudhill.
Hi.
Chair of time, thank you all for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Looks like this has, are these all together, or, and one page stamped?
It was just one email.
One email, okay, so.
That's all.
Should I keep it together, or should I distribute it to everybody?
Yeah, everybody's enough there for everybody to get them.
It looks like, oh, is it all the same page?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know then.
It is.
It looked like it was to me, I got mine already.
Oh, you got yours already, okay.
I took mine and passed it to you.
All right, here we go.
All right, I am 15 on the agenda, is Maria C. Del Rosso, 87 Inlet Road West, Shinnecott Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-176-1-3.2. This is held over from our June 20th meeting.
Gina Redden here to represent Maria Del Rosso. She's TKR Shores, yes ma'am. It was held over for a number of reasons.
If I can interrupt, I'm not sworn in, and I may need to speak.
No problem, I'm three in. If you're going to state your name and address for the record.
Maria Del Rosso, 29 Maryland Avenue, Armagh, New York.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, the board asked me to do my due diligence, and asked a couple of questions, asked me to ask the client a couple of questions, and then I took it upon myself to basically research the entire neighborhood. So, I photographed from 33 to 95 Cold Spring Pond, which is basically the old cabins that were adjacent to the old bathhouse. And my job is to prove that it's within character of the neighborhood, that hardship wasn't self-created, and so we'll get into that. So basically, it starts from 95, and then it goes down to 33. So, while I'm talking and chatting, you can take a peek at these photos that I took. Basically, the neighborhood, first, let me start, the neighborhood has very, very long lots that go to Cold Spring Pond, and each one of them roughly 50, some are even 40 feet wide, and as we know, in a typical house, 20, 30 feet wide, so it doesn't leave a whole lot of room. I numbered each address, and there's two here, you guys can pass around. So you can see, I highlighted number 87, and you can see it's a very, very thin pond. All these cottages that border Cold Spring Pond are pre-existing, non-conforming, unfinished, unheated cabins, basically, for summer people that wanted to come out and go swimming and use the neighborhood. Landmarks and Historics actually, actually says in their report, which I will submit to the board, although there are scattering of small cottages in the area that appear to be original, hers is one of the ones that appear to be original, there have been many enlarged with second stories, vinyl siding, and or noticeable changes. I'm submitting the no objection, Landmarks and Historics, for the board's review as well. One copy? Yeah, just one. Now, if you'll note from all of the photos. For all the board members to have copies of these? They can just, it's just for info only, it's just for the file, really. So, I will, I some have some other ones that everyone has copies of. Now, a couple of, I did take the pictures, like I said, and each one of these very thin lots has, well, some of the properties are developed, more so than they should be. Some of them are pre-existing, non-conforming, but most of them are three-quarters, if not seven-eighths, are altered somehow. So, all the structures are close to the property line, be it houses at seven feet, sheds at three feet, or decks running up literally to the property line. It's the norm in this, in this area, between 33 and 95, except for one property.
So there are no setbacks? That is, all of them is a continuous deck going from one up to the next?
Not all of them, but a lot of them, a lot of them.
I wonder if how many of them have, have variances from this board, or how many of them are pre-existing?
Very good question. So, I'll start with, you know what, I'm going to start with 95, which is the most northern of the properties. I actually did this variance before the board, property of Eddie Manetti. The board granted a variance for a detached garage, and at a point, 4.2 from the property line, and a pyramid law relief of 1,521 cubic feet. So, I always like to attach like an aerial, like a, not just the aerial, which is on the backside, but the visual of this is what this house looks like, and you can see it's like hugging the property line. So, the board.
Did you change it or?
My application or Eddie's, this one?
Your application.
It has, I will get to that. We did change.
Yeah, the little.
I know you asked, I know you asked, I know you asked. So I'm just going to, I'm just going to rattle through some of these. 95 Inlet Road, Pyramid Law Garage with no storage space above, was granted 1,521 cubic feet relief. Directly to the south at 87, and I have Barbara and Lee here in the audience, by the way, they're the adjacent neighbors to the south in support of my client. Although it didn't have zoning board relief, 85 Inlet Road did have a certificate of wetlands compliance, not just for the shed, but for woodwalk and planters running right up to the property line. Here's the survey that was approved during that application.
Okay, well, that's interesting.
Interesting.
They may have an issue there.
Well, it would have.
I'm just saying.
It has a cert, not just a wetlands compliance, but a certificate of compliance from the building department.
That doesn't mean very much, as you know.
I'm just saying, it's, it's the norm, it's typical in the area.
Things may have been missed.
Things, one, okay, at 83, this was a house actually burned down, it was a one and a half story, and it didn't look like this, I don't have, I looked at some of the aerials, I've talked to some of the neighbors, it is now a full two-story, it's an X-zone, so we don't have that relief going through the board, but you can see that it towers over, and this doesn't have any zoning board relief, and this was okay through the building department as well.
Kind of an existing house that was razed?
It, it wasn't razed, it's an X-zone, but they did elevate, and pre-existing non-conforming, you're supposed to keep the same level, and not go any higher than what had previously existed.
Right, and what previously existed may have been, pre-existing non-conforming.
It was a one and a half story, that's a full two-story, so it definitely wasn't.
Yeah.
But.
But, but we, but we don't know for sure, we really don't know.
Number 63, I gave you an aerial and a visual.
Okay.
From the road. At number 63, the board granted a 2,926 cubic foot and variance on the east side, and a 7,180 cubic foot on the west side. I also foiled the architecturals, so they are also attached as well, Candace was kind enough to pull the file for me, so I took pictures of them, because I told them about. And then 61 has an outdoor shower that runs right up to the property line, that had a, not a zoning board approval, but a pre-existing non-conforming building permit through the building department, or worked out.
Okay.
But just, here's the thing though, there's only one copy of all of them.
I know, I'm just, I'm just making a point, I'm just making a point.
No, but they won't know what your point is, because they can't take them home to read them, and they can't leave it at the table.
So maybe you can supply copies to us?
Okay, well.
That would be great.
Please, please.
Okay.
It's my case.
I'm just making an example of some of the other properties.
Listen, it's a very old colony.
It's a very old cottage.
I'm getting a little old now, but.
I know, I know, I know.
But I grew up at South Hampton Peconic Beach Club, I spent my entire youth there, I used to go fishing down there, so between, and we've granted relief down in this area before.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? So between that, and, you know, the boys down there with the restaurant, and we went through all that too, you know what I mean, so we're somewhat familiar with the area.
Right, right.
And I appreciate the fact that you're, you're, or you're doing just.
Doing your work, really.
Okay, so we, we get that.
The board asked me to do my due diligence, so there is.
Yeah.
Okay, we also held it over for conservation board approval, and then I'm sure you already have a copy of this, but here's a copy of the adopted resolution that Marty okayed, everything, the deck, the shed, the outdoor shower, including the proposed additions. The neighbors, the neighbors are also here. I emailed the letter, but they're here, but there's a copy of the letter, not objecting to the project.
Mm-hmm.
But you have that already, but they're here if you want to talk to them. You also asked me to get estimates for the hardship.
Yep.
And this doesn't even include going back to conservation, expediting, changing surveys, et cetera, et cetera. $7,125 hardship to move the shed, cut back the deck, remove the old shower, move it, new fencing, plumbing, the whole spiel.
$7,000 and change?
$7,000 and change, that doesn't even include putting new pavers where the deck actually is right now. So I'll submit those, just so you have them for the file.
Okay.
But, most importantly, the board asked if we could reduce the elevation of the roof, and you have copies of this, I dropped off to Candace, but I, Candace, but I have, I have more. So, Carrie Kassel, the architect for the project, reduced the elevation of the addition of the storage attic facility in general, and she reduced it by two and a half feet, so I submitted a cover letter along with the plan, so it's by 20%. And there was also a question about the interior of the attic within, and the roof, I should say the headspace, is only eight feet, it's not 13, it's been reduced, so it is eight feet. But you have copies of the sliding.
What's the new pyramid encroachment?
The new pyramid encroachment is 2,093. And, and the shed didn't change, the deck didn't change, the shower didn't change, everything's still there.
And that's for the addition?
Yes.
But it was advertised for 1,960.
So it went up?
No, it didn't go up, that was a mistake. I think Candace had, had Carrie do something, but I wasn't a part of it.
The, the, well, it was 1647, it should be 1647.
Right, okay, 1647, all right. It did go down, it did go down.
So it's not 2,090?
No.
It's 16 what?
1647.
1647.
Started at 1960.
Yeah, so, which is not, it, this is nominal, and keep, keep in mind that most of it is from the front yard, it's not the side. Because the house is so close to the road, it's mostly from the front, that's where the relief is coming from, it's not the side. The side is a little tiny, oh, sorry.
That's right.
The side is this little tiny roofline, this, that's it, it's the front yard, because the house is so, and that's a hardship, because the house is so close to the front, that is her hardship. She didn't build it, it wasn't self-created.
Who built it?
The house?
No, no.
It's a proposed addition.
The, 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 the proposed addition, I'm talking about the deck, the shed, all of that. The shed was actually built by a former owner, Con, Juan.
He was two, two former owners.
Two former owners before she, and the, the neighbors are actually here to testify to it, so it lit.
They've given us most of the history from purchasing it, so when we purchased it, it was all there, and I just assumed it was all within regulation, because nobody said anything otherwise.
Okay.
And because of this is when we're actually starting to learn that it's not, and then we've spoken with the neighbors on the history, you know, how far back or so, so it was a gentleman by the name of Juan, he was two owners ago, so he sold to the people that I purchased from.
Okay, so you don't have any information as to how, how it went up, it just was there when you bought it?
It was there.
I presume you had an attorney when you bought, bought the property?
I did, and we did the title search and everything.
Yeah, this happens all the time, and, you know, I did my due diligence when, I originally took the job just for the, the two additions in the front, and then when I was doing my research, I said, well, the deck, the shed, the outdoor shower.
Well, and she was, and I was like, none of this has.
And I'm not going to be honest, and I'm going to go, you know, and some people wouldn't even say anything, but I'm going to be honest and say, hey, all this other stuff, I have to legalize too, by the way, I want to help you.
Which I agree with, the only thing I've ever done to the property is the dock, and all of that was done, you know, according to code, I went through, got permits, made sure everything was okay, so this was all a surprise to me, it's like, okay, well, while we're doing it, you know, we have to make sure everything's, everything's proper.
The outdoor shower, your ex-husband built, and the on-grade decking that nobody can see from the road, of course, because it's on-grade, was built in an emergency situation after she broke her foot on the brick patios, that was, used to be there, and I have aerials showing the brick patio, it used to be there. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have him here to testify.
Okay, yeah, because I wanted you to come here, and I, and thank you for being here tonight.
Of course.
But, but I wanted you to be here to be able to explain kind of what, what the circumstances were, not that Gina couldn't have done that for you, but when we have as-built, and not all of this is as-built, that's part of it, and then there's the, the other parts of it that aren't, you know, I, I want to hear, speaking for myself, you know, how it occurred, that something went up without permits, because we have too many people putting stuff up without permits, and often it is not, stuff like this, stuff that's much bigger. However, I will also say, again, speaking for myself, that a shed right on a property line, and a deck right on a property line, is something that concerns me a great deal. I can't, I, it's, we have on occasion granted sheds practically on property lines, I can't recall us doing decks quite right on a property line, maybe it's a few feet off, but the purpose of setbacks is so that the neighbors are not literally staring each other as they're using their properties, that's, that's what it's for, and so this is problematic in, in my mind for that reason, and that, and again, just speaking for myself, I appreciate the fact that you, that you have reduced the pyramid, that, that's great, but I'm still concerned about the, the shed and the deck being, being right on the property line the way they are, and that's just me.
What should I say?
We'll have. Um, we'll have, hold on a second, okay, all right.
Could I hear from the rest of the board on how they feel and what other concerns they might have?
Yep.
I can't hear you, could you say?
I said, could I hear from the rest of the board?
I too am concerned about anything being right on a property line.
I'm right with the chair, and Mr. Daley on that one?
There are more things toward that, I still can't figure out what the pyramid is. Because the numbers don't add up.
They, they, they kind of do.
They, they have three revisions here that add up to one thousand six forty-seven.
Exactly. They, that's the...
That's the new one.
That's the new number.
That's the new number. Originally, if you add the number, it was twenty-six forty. So in the, in the write-up...
It's not two thousand ninety-three, yeah.
It's on the plans.
That was, um, she said that it was, Gina said that it was...
Incorrect. We discussed this before and I said these, these are incorrect.
So what's incorrect?
The two thousand ninety-three.
Yeah, that.
Okay, if that's...
So Brian, Brian, answer your question, the, the southeast corner, if I did the math correctly
earlier today, the southeast corner was reduced by a hundred and ninety, it was originally six hundred and eighty, it's now four hundred and ninety.
The southeast side in here says four seventy-three.
But you have to add the other seventeen, there's two numbers.
I got that.
I went over that with Dennis, so it was...
Four seventy-three and seventeen, and then fifteen fifty-seven.
Right, would give you sixteen forty-seven, that's your number.
Okay.
But it's broken, it's broken down in the advertisement, that's how it's broken down. The advertisement does not give you a total from the beginning.
So there's windows in the attic though?
There is a window just because aesthetically, she wanted to look pleasing from the curb. There's one window in the front for curb appeal, only, that's it. And she probably would change that window to something smaller, a little diamond or whatever, if the board so chooses, that's it.
Well, in my view, the property is ugly, you know, just at best. If you look, it's just a really ugly home. So when we were doing the design, I said, can we make it look pretty, was the word I used. And I like windows, so I said, oh, windows, we were designing the peak. First of all, just like one simple line, because if you look at it right now, it has three or four different lines, it's very confusing. I said, can we put a, a window in the front, because I thought it would look attractive and it would add to the character of the home.
When, when did you buy this house?
Two thousand and two.
It's gonna be a two-story house.
Um, it's one floor with an attic, and then it would have a pull-down to get to the attic.
I see that, I, yeah.
Was trying to straighten out the lines on the home, just give it some aesthetic, give it some charm, give it some character.
We just spent an hour going over how much patio furniture she has that she needs to store because she puts it in the middle of her living room, because the cottage, and I've seen interior pictures, because I had to submit them to Landmarks, is really small.
It's very, very small. So in the winter, I just take everything off of the back deck and put it in the living area and like the little dining area. Eventually, I would like to retire there, and I can't keep, we could barely walk by, you know, in the winter when we really closed it down, so the idea was we just put it up, pop it up into the attic.
So Helen and Keith, where are you in terms of, uh, what we have in front of us?
I got, I have some concerns, but some of this isn't too bad, you know, the others are...
I don't see how we can approve anything right on a property line. And, I mean, maybe we have in the past, I, but I, I don't believe that I have and I can't in good conscience...
It's rare, it's rare, and it usually is, is a shed.
Approve it, because once you do that, then everybody in the neighborhood comes in and says, well, she got it on the property line, they got it on the...
Well, it'd be a precedence, I, I understand that.
It's a dangerous, dangerous precedent, so...
How can you do that?
Well, the shed, we were, we were talking about, what do you do with the shed? Because I think that would be the biggest concern. There's really no place else to put it. The only option would be in the backyard, which would be waterside, and nobody wants to move it.
Marty would not like that either.
To the water. We don't want anything closer to the water, right? The idea is to stay away from it, and I'm very concerned about keeping that. There's not, there's no room.
Yeah, and that's not enough.
She has to like walk through.
It's, it's a hard, the, the, the whole lot is a hardship, it's so narrow.
It's so narrow.
But, but, but everything is up against the, everything is up against the property line. My, I, speaking for myself, I'd like to see five feet, a setback back of five feet.
What, could you explain how she would do that?
She's gonna have to do, the shed obviously is gonna have to go.
There's no shed.
And then the, and then the deck would have to be reduced.
And the shower?
And there's no, there's no storage at all inside. It's two bedrooms, tiny little closets. And when I come out on the weekends, we pack the bed. I'm sorry?
In the new house, you have a lot of storage.
With, with the, uh, the new roofline upstairs, yes.
If you move it back five feet, you can't move the shed back and keep it? Just back five feet?
No, we measured, I don't think there was five foot between it. You're saying moving the shed, it would be right up against the...
Right against the house, right against the house.
Five feet away from the property line.
So put, but it to the house.
Basically.
Right.
Is that five feet?
Um, I don't have a scale on me. It's, um, it's a twenty scale.
Yeah, and then the deck would, would have to be cut off.
Five feet, this is three right here.
Too much.
So roughly, it would be a little bit more than this, about this, about the width of the front of the shower.
And I think I'm speaking for four, for, for a majority, I think.
Are there windows over here?
Uh, there are, there's windows, um, this is a bedroom here, so there's a window, there's a bathroom here with a small window, and a bedroom here with a small window. So there's three windows along that way.
What if you moved it up here?
There's not enough room from the, um...
There's five feet, there's seven, seven, three.
Right, but it would go, so if we put it over here, right?
No, not there, there, your view is right there. It's seven, three, and...
Because the drain is going here, there's a septic here, so the...
It's exactly, it's twelve, three, you have enough room to put it here.
We're gonna close this, you guys are gonna figure out if we can move the shed five feet?
You have enough room to put it here.
And then, and then cut off, cut off the deck, so it's five feet, and now the shower.
And five feet right here. We're leaving it open for them to come back with a new survey.
Seven, three, and five, that's twelve, three.
To make five feet.
You have enough.
If you can do the five feet, we'll clo, we'll close it. If, if it turns out that you can't do the five feet, then...
Five feet on the deck, you're saying?
On every, on every, on everything on that property line.
So the deck and the, um...
Can the deck, the shower?
Nope.
And the shower?
All, all of it needs to be, in, in my view, moved, moved over a little bit.
I'll have to talk to the surveyor, and, um, I'm gonna have to go back to the conservation board.
So why don't we leave it open and let them bring the new survey, so we can see it, and then I feel a little comfortable with it.
Okay, okay.
If we could.
Okay.
You know, not, not to be unkind or unsympathetic, but there was a day when if a, a house didn't fit all of our stuff, we would buy another house or move to another property. I mean, this board can't take on everyone's issue with not having enough storage in order to then be asked to allow things that don't...
Well, truthfully, had I known this was all, you know, not within regulation, I probably wouldn't have purchased the home.
Understood.
I would have had them fix it before I purchased the home.
That's why we do, I've...
And it's my, you know, it's my fault, but nobody detected it.
Right, and so you understand, the reason I suggested five feet is, is to say, we're willing to give you some variance relief, but just not all the way to the property line. That, that's, that's to me, the, the, the fair way to deal with it, because we, we don't...
We do two feet, two, because I'm thinking if we do two feet, then we can move it right here without blocking the window. So if we start moving it, we're gonna close up the windows and the bedroom.
Why don't you work to see if you can do the five feet in a place where you're not blocking the window, and come back, can we come back on, on the fifteenth, is that...
I don't know if that's enough time for them.
You have, you have, you have one more choice.
Yeah.
One hundred?
That you can...
So the first...
We didn't want her moving in this now.
Take the shed and the shower out completely right now.
But it's not just a survey, she's gonna have to get her...
Promise to cut back five feet of the deck.
If it's only five feet.
Right.
So the fifteen is not enough time.
And they'll close it now, and then we could reapply for a shed in a new location. And an outdoor shower the right way.
We're gonna, keep it open or close it?
Five feet.
We're gonna leave it open, I think, till September fifteenth.
I'm thinking like, we can maybe move the shower to the side of the house, but the shed is not the, not the...
Okay, so we, we, what we want to do is we want to just keep the public hearing open until, uh, September fifteenth. I know there are neighbors here, I want to give them an opportunity to speak.
The nineteen?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the fifth, the fifth.
September fifth?
September fifth, okay. Um, in the meantime, um, is there anyone who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of, of Del Rosso? Okay.
The only other thing is if you say you're gonna take this out, or cut the shed five feet.
Just have to swear you in.
Sure.
And move it here.
Um, if you can state your name and address, please.
Barbara Seroy, S, S and Sam, I R O I S. Uh, my permanent address is twenty-six, twenty-five, Loxley Street.
You can't have two conversations going on at once.
I'm sorry, Barbara?
Yeah.
I need you to stand at the podium or I have to see, because they can't get you in the microphone.
They can't get you, yeah.
Okay, again?
Yes, please.
Barbara Seroy, S is in Sam, I R O I S, twenty-six, twenty-five, Loxley Street, Sun City Center, Florida.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
I, uh, have owned next door since nineteen seventy-nine. It was definitely three owners ago that built it. Where the shed is now doesn't block any view, it gives us privacy basically, because it, it's, our house is there, we're very close together because, as was stated, the, uh, lots are very, very narrow, the shed is a blockage, it doesn't cut our view, it's, blocks our bedroom window from their house, it's perfect where it is. So I really would beg you to let it stay where it is.
I don't think that's gonna happen, ma'am.
I gathered that, but I thought that I would at least state my preference.
Okay, and I appreciate your, your comments, okay.
Hey, I, could I just, one more thing, just for argument's sake? You guys gave Eddie Manetti a garage, a big one, four point two feet from his property line, would the board consider if she moved, we could close tonight, she moves everything and cuts the deck back four point two feet from the property line?
I couldn't hear a word you said.
Four point two feet from the property line.
Four point two feet instead of five feet.
I think we can, I think we can have enough to be able to move around it, if we just pick it all up and move it four point two feet.
I'm still at five. This, me personally.
The board has a precedence of giving that setback for a garage.
You can't possibly use one variance granted and say the entire neighborhood gets four point two feet, absolutely not.
But it's typical, and it's...
We never set precedent.
I just did, a couple years ago.
This case has its own merits.
I, I think we already made a decision for, to keep this, the case open, and for you guys to come back and do your homework, okay?
And then if you come back with four point two feet, we'll decide what, we'll decide what to do. There may be the votes, there may not be the votes, okay? That, I think that's where we are.
I would recommend coming back at five.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, um...
Let me go talk to the surveyor, thank you for entertaining me tonight, late night.
Okay, all right, Keith, I believe this is your case.
It is my case. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to hold this case open for all purposes to September fifth.
We'll be back then.
God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. Mr. Tuthill?
Aye.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. DeSessa? Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair of the tie.
Does that close our regularly scheduled program?
I know.
This is a... Tonight is a great example of why people should get COs updated when they transfer property or before they purchase.
That's very true, very true.
And we had the opportunity to make that, make that law in the town, and we didn't do it.
Well, we don't get to decide that, that's the town board.
I know, I think that that should be revisited.
Moving on.
Moving on to the decision calendar.
Yes.
Who has one?
I do. Findings and determination, an amended decision in the matter of Catherine Curtin and Robert Hulse Meyer, fourteen fifty-eight Sag Road, Sag Harbor, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map, number nine hundred twenty-six, two eighty-four. On June seventh, two thousand eighteen, by decision number D O one eight O six seven, this board granted relief for a proposed swimming pool and detached garage with attached outdoor shower conditioned upon compliance and maintenance of the landscape plan prepared by Blo, Barry Bloch, revised April twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, by the applicants and all subsequent owners of the premises, with fencing as permitted by the town code, and two, that the garage pool house not be used as habitable space. By letter dated May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, Susan Barley of Dew East Planning, agent for the property owners, requested that the board consider substituting revised plans for the proposed garage pool house. This modification request was advertised in the paper, posted and mailed, and testimony was offered by Mrs. Barley, Shannon McCaffrey, and Catherine Curtin, that revisions have been made to the proposed garage pool house that do not affect the variance granted, variances granted, but require modifications to the survey and building plans.
This one is...
Specifically, Ms. Barley noted that stairs and a partial basement were added to the proposed garage pool house, and that the right roofline dormers were revised along with the garage door and access to the loft. There is no opposition to this request, and there is no change in the relief previously granted, and that the revisions made to the plans and survey have no impact on the variances granted. This board finds it appropriate to grant the amendment. Therefore, decision number D zero one eight zero six seven, dated June seventh, two thousand eighteen, is hereby amended to refer to the survey prepared by M. Michael Hammer, dated June sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, last revised May thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, and the architectural drawings prepared by Dew East Planning, Inc., dated June twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen. All other provisions and conditions of this decision dated June seventh, two thousand eighteen, remain in full force and effect.
Second. Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill?
Aye.
Mr. DeSessa?
Aye.
Chair of the tie.
I have a decision in the matter of the application of Daniel Rosenblum, twenty-two Bay Avenue East Court. Probably is identified on the Suffolk County Tax Map as nine hundred dash three fourteen dash one ten, dash seventeen, is located at twenty-two Bay Avenue East Court, and is approximately twenty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-five square feet in size in the R twenty zoning district. The premises benefits from pre-existing C of O, number C seven four two five, dated August thirtieth, nineteen eighty-two, for a two and a half story, one-family dwelling. Excuse me, this board finds the subject application to be a type two action under secret. Agent for the applicant, Susanna Herman, of N. Consultants, and the applicant's son and the architect, Benjamin Rosenblum, appeared and testified that the applicant seeks variances in order to construct a one-story addition to an existing dwelling to update the kitchen and air living and dining space. Ms. Herman explained that the house benefits from a pre-existing C of O and is an historic house built sometime between nineteen eighty-nine and nineteen ten. As such, in order to preserve the character of the existing house and the neighborhood which is comprised of other installed dwellings, the addition is proposed to the rear. Ms. Herman added that a variance will be required for the pool, since once the addition is constructed, it will place the existing pool within the required minimum side yard for the principal building. It passes the five part text. Therefore, this board grants relief from Town Code Section required minimum side yard for the principal building. These variances are the structures shown on the survey prepared by Floyd Carrington of Raynor Marks and Carrington, prepared May 3rd, 2019, and the plan prepared by architect Benjamin T. Rosenbloom, dated May 7th, 2019. Grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to require the final approval of the subject premise.
Second.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mrs. DeSessa.
Aye.
Chair of the tie.
I have a decision in the matter of North Sea Me Cox LLC, 636 North Sea Me Cox Road, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-132-215.2. I will read the relief at the end. This is approximately 69,265 square feet. CR60 zoning district applicant in Brendan Gilmore took title to the premises by D dated February 25th, 2015. It was a C O for a two-story, single-family dwelling, attached garage, porch, patio, finished basement with a swimming pool with hot tub and outdoor shower, type-two under SECRE. The following testimony was submitted at the public hearing. Wayne Brun, counsel for the applicant, stated they were trying to construct a 55 by 115 tennis court in the rear yard. It was proposed on a flag lot adjacent to an ag reserve. Mr. Brun argued that there's no impact to the neighbors. Mr. Brun also stated that there is a 20-foot, foot-wide vegetated buffer along the driveway of the premises and that the applicant will screen the tennis court, consistent with the landscape plan submitted. No application to the premises. Therefore, this board grants relief from Town Code Section 330-77D for proposed rear yard coverage of 28%, where a maximum of 20% is permitted for the location of a proposed 55 by 110 tennis court, as shown on the survey prepared by Michael J. Reiner of the Reiner Group. Surveyed March 29th, 2019, last revised June 24th, 2019. Grant of the foregoing relief is subject to the tennis court being landscaped and screened, consistent with the landscape plan prepared by Cardell Development LLC, and such screening being maintained. And such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of such premises.
Second.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mrs. DeSessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Chair of the tie.
Decision in the matter of the application, JJ, 2015 LLC, 7111 Sag Harbor, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-10-1-94.005. Um, let's see here. What we're trying to do is legalize a swimming pool constructed without the benefit of building permit, for an accessory side yard setback of 5.3 feet, where 20 feet is required, and 330-760, place an accessory building structure in use in old districts, and 330-83C yards to allow a swimming pool to remain within the required minimum total side yard of the principal building. Tipping scholar, attorney for the applicant, stated that the owner acquired the subject premises in March of 2019 to a foreclosure sale and had no involvement in the construction of the pool. Ms. Scarlet explained that the 2000, in 2000, the house was constructed, issued a certificate of occupancy on May 4, 2000, and that, that same year, a certificate of electrical compliance was issued for the wiring in the swimming pool, but had a building permit. I don't know how you give the word. Before it was all over, it passes the five-part test. Therefore, in the reasons set forth herein, this board grants relief from Town Code to legalize a swimming pool, because it will have the benefit of a building permit, 330-11 Residential District's Table of Dimensional Regulations, for accessory side yard setback of 5.3 feet, where 20 feet is required, 330-760, and 330-83C yards to allow the swimming pool to remain within the required minimum total side yard of the principal building. As all as shown in the survey by Gary Benz, L. S., dated April 15, 2019, the granting of this relief is subject to the conditions of such nature, as the applicant has already acquired and may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the structures and the subject premises.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
I believe Mr. DeSessa accuses himself.
I do.
Chair of the tie.
I have a decision in the matter of the application of Hampton and Warren Club. The subject premises located at 13 Kyle Road, Hampton, Dade County, Suffolk, and State of New York. The premises benefits from pre-existing C O, number C15054, dated the 7/31/2015, for a single-family, two-story frame dwelling shed. This board finds the subject application to be a type-two action under SECRE. At the public hearing on this matter, Agina Rigdon of D K R Shaw, Incorporated, appeared on behalf of the applicant, testifying that they seek variances in order to construct the mudroom and front entry with steps on an existing dwelling. Ms. Rigdon testified that the dwelling has pre-existing non-conforming setbacks, thereby limiting where any addition can be proposed, and noted that the relief requested is de minimis. It passes the five-part test. Therefore, this board grants relief from Town Code Section 330-115C for a principal front yard setback of 25.6 feet, where 29.9 feet is existing, for a proposed mudroom and a total side yard setback of 40.3 feet, where 42.2 feet is existing, for a proposed one-story addition to the existing dwelling, with structures as shown on the survey prepared by Joseph Seca Pico, P L. F. of Colonial Surveying, P. C., dated November 16, 2015, last revised April 25th, 2019, and the plans prepared by architect Kerry Casel, dated July 29th, 2019. The granted foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to require for final approval of the subject premise.
Second.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mrs. DeSessa.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair of the tie. Do you wanna go next, or you want me to go next?
I'll go and get, I'll go and get it. Okay. All right. This is, I guess this is a matter of the application of Hampton's RSVP LLC, 61 Edgewood Road, Southampton, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-98-1-14. Okay. So what we were trying to do with this one was it's a determination that, you know, that we have a single and separate lot here. All right? Suffolk County Tax Map, number, what I just said, 900-98-1-14, is held in single and separate ownership from the adjacent parcels, and thus entitled to relief pursuant to Town Code 330-115D. All right. David Gilmore Jr. was the individual representing these folks. So therefore, this board is addressing the issue of a possible merger of this possible parcel with the adjacent lots due to the fact that the applicant is unable to prove that there were no periods of common ownership with the adjacent lots. On the basis of the evidence and testimony presented at the hearing, we find that no merger occurred as a matter of law, and thus, the subject premises should be treated as a separate pre-existing lot. Therefore, this board finds the subject premises located at 61 Edgewood Road, Southampton, down in Southampton County, Suffolk, and the state of New York, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-98-1-14, and is a 40,407 square foot non-conforming lot held in a single and separate ownership, and is thus entitled to relief pursuant to 330-115D.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mrs. DeSessa.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair of the tie. I have a determination in the matter of the application of Elias and Helen Wexler. This is for 9 Sandpiper Court in West Hampton, tax number 900-382-151. Applicants request relief for principal minimum side yard setback of 10.2 feet, where 20 feet is required, and total side yard setback of 39.4 feet, where 40 feet is required, and pyramid relief in the amount of 41.8 cubic feet. This is all for a proposed two-story residence with attached garage, balconies, and terraces. Let me see. We have C O's for the structures on the property. It is conforming as to size. It is type-two pursuant to SECRE. Testimony at the public hearing by Kitrick Moats, attorney for the applicants, consisted of explanation that the applicant seek to demolish the existing structures and construct a two-story, single-family residence with an attached garage, balconies, and terraces that would require setback relief and a small amount of pyramid relief, as well as a proposed pool, pool terraces, and proposed balconies to be constructed in an angled configuration on this parcel. The subject lot is a parcel along a Doug Canal and includes a non-disturbance, non-fertilization buffer area adjacent to the Doug Canal. The applicant obtained approval from the Health Department, a wetlands permit, and a letter of non-jurisdiction from the D E C. for the proposed structures. The new structures will be FEMA compliant, and the residents will have a new low nitrogen septic system, and there is existing screening. The two adjacent neighbors submitted letters of support, one of whom is at 11 Sandpiper Court, which is the adjacent lot most impacted by the relief requested by the applicants. It passes the five-part test. Therefore, in the interest of justice and the reason set forth herein, this board grants applicant relief from zoning code 330-11, Residential District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal minimum side yard setback of 10.2 feet, where 20 feet is required, and lot, total side yard setback of 39.4 feet, where 45 feet is required, and relief from zoning code pyramid relief of 330-84D of the amount of 41.8 cubic feet. The attached, which is all minimal relief. The attached two-story residence and attached garage, balconies, and terraces will have the dimensional requirements and location as shown on the survey of Fox Land Surveying by David H. Fox Surveyor, dated October 2nd, 2017, last revised August 22nd, 2018, as well as the site plans and pyramid sketch of Austin Patterson Diston Architects by Stuart Diston, architect dated May 2nd, 2019, which were submitted with the application or incorporated herein, and any other conditions the applicant, or permits the applicant, applicants require for final approval of the two-story residence with an attached garage, balconies, and terraces to be built at the subject property. Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mrs. DeSessa.
Aye.
Chair of the tie.
Close to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.